Well, welcome everyone to the City of Phoenix Public Safety and Justice Subcommittee. Is there a call? I'd like to call this meeting to order. Is there any call to the public?
There is not.
Already seen that there's no call to the public at this time. Is there approval for the minutes?
There's approval.
Alrighty, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Alright, we got a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. The next item is item number one. That's for information only. Does anybody want to hear information on this item?
Is it item number two, Chairman?
I'm sorry, item number two, correct.
Okay.
We have some cards on this item.
Mr. Chairman, in addition to the cards, there's also 149 written comments that we received on this item.
Does anybody want to report on it, or would you like to listen to the individuals that are online?
Why don't we listen to the individuals that are online first, and then maybe questions will come after that?
Alrighty, sounds great. So Cory, can you go ahead and start the first person?
Our first individual is Amy McLe- McLeo. She's no longer on. We have Hava Derby. He's also not on. Edward Brown. He's also not on. Jacob Ra- Raferd?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Alright, good morning, City Council. My name is Jacob Raferd. I want to first start by expressing concern over key organizers not being granted a platform to speak during December ninth's narratively false review of last year's protests primarily led by civil rights activists. The inability to provide firsthand account of the documented innocence of our demonstrations and unethical practice of the police department granted them the ability to deceitfully save face and suppress knowledge that dozens of innocent citizens, some young as eighteen, face life-altering charges in their wake. Peaceful exercises of the First Amendment targeted in collaboration with the Maricopa County Attorney's Office. Now, this council has no jurisdiction over them, but I'd be remiss to not implicate them as how the police arrests, as how the MCAO prosecutes. Now, since the first week of June, the citywide movement led what is an arguably nonviolent demonstrations, ensuring attendees left as safely as they arrived and that despite our justified emotion, we channeled our anger through our voices and political education rather than acts of calamity. Hardly a semblance of disruption since these isolated events of May that the department obsessively uses to spin as societal threats. Present every day was an overbearing aggressive military police force led by agitators such as Lieutenant Ben Moore. Now, as protests continued into the summer and it was evident that we weren't going to create the environment necessary for a permanent crackdown, they became more aggressive. Warrants for unmerited obstruction of thoroughfare charges for events days or weeks prior. Since court dates were often moved back, it's now an entry point for additional arrests, harsher charges, and stacked felonies, leaving fates up to a vindictive judicial system that saw calls for Alister Delby voted out. Overseen by prosecutors such as the infamous April Sosil who spouses an officer. This is political prosecution. Snatching people out of vehicles, showing up at their homes, gang enhancements against youth who are wearing black and carrying umbrellas. It's, this is the textbook political prosecution, and I yield the rest of my time. Thank you.
Next, we have Lola Insangu.
... system that saw calls for Alister Delby voted out. Overseen by prosecutors such as the infamous April Sosil who spouses an officer. This is political prosecution. Snatching people out of vehicles, showing up at their homes, gang enhancements against youth who are wearing black and carrying umbrellas. This is, this is the textbook political prosecution, and I yield the rest of my time. Thank you.
Next, we have Lola Insangu.
... system that saw calls for Alister Delby voted out.
I'm trying to get on y'all, and I'm not being able to, I'm not able to get on.
Lola, take your, lower your volume. Okay, go ahead.
I'm trying to get on.
Okay Chairman, we're gonna move on and go to the next individual.
Alright, thank you Cory. It sounds a little muffled.
Yeah. Sandra Castro Solis. She's not on the line. Lola, are you on the line? Okay, that was the end of the comments for item two, Chairman.
Alright, thank you Cory. Cory, there was quite a few people that weren't on the line. Is there... Do you have a reason for that?
Chairman, we received comments from about 149 individuals, but they did not sign up to speak.
Alrighty, thank you. So our next item is, oh, is there any comments from my colleagues on item number two?
We do have one item, one individual councilman who was signed up earlier, who is now on the line. Hava Derby.
Is she on the line now?
Hi, yes, I'm here. Thank you so much. Boy, I'm glad I didn't miss my chance. Yes, agenda item number two. I want to speak to why we were out in the streets, cops killing innocent people and being protected from being prosecuted. Charges not being filed. We are out because as John Biscobi said, we have a crisis of trust with our law enforcement and the attorney's office. And... Sorry. We, I'm one of those that's facing charges. My date's being moved so that I can have an August ninth date held over me. I found out that when I got my police report, that the reason the cops came after me the night I was arrested is because I flipped them off. We have a real issue with cops not wanting to be seen, held accountable, and we need to work together. We're asking to please have some accountability. That's all we're asking. We want to root out the bad cops. We need to get over this crisis of trust between the community and law enforcement. We're asking to be heard, to be seen, and for people to stop being killed, harassed, and treated as if they're not meant to be protected and served by those people in power. Thank you so much. I yield the rest of my time.
Milton, is that all the times, all the callers that we have right now?
Yes, Chairman, it is.
Alrighty, so any council members with comments or concerns? Council member Garcia?
Thank you Chairman. Is there a presentation from, from police, from the questions that were asked last time?
We do have City Prosecutor Bob Smith, who's here to address the questions that you posed. He's coming to the table now.
And, but there's no one from police?
Good morning.
Assistant Chief Lopez is at the table as well.
Okay. Good morning Chairman Nowakowski, council members of the Public Safety Subcommittee. Yes, Gabe Lopez is here with me as well. Council member Garcia, I just wanted to give you, you had asked for the data on what had happened with the charges that I believe, I don't, I assume you wanted to know what happened to the ones that came through our office. There were charges that initially went through the county attorney's office, and so we ended up receiving 105 cases that the county had been dismissed by the county attorney. Their office submitted through police department through, to our office. We reviewed those and ultimately decided that we were not going to proceed with prosecution. There wasn't a sufficient basis for prosecution. So that was the follow-up I had. You had asked for data on those cases, and this was related to the May 30th of 2020, the day before the curfew went into effect. Assistant Chief Lopez is here if you have questions related to the police side, but I'll wait and see if you have questions.
Any other questions, Councilmember Garcia?
Yeah. Um, yeah, I think Lola and others might still be on the line, so after my, my comments, we could try to let them, give them one more chance. That would be great. I want to thank everyone who, who submitted comments and who was present at the last Subcommittee and who's maintained engaged in this conversation. I also want to mark that our Phoenix Police Department has had five officer-involved shootings in the past two weeks, and we still don't have office of accountability or civilian review board. We heard one caller now and last time others mentioned the Maricopa County Attorney, and I know we don't have jurisdiction or say, but I do know we, we collaborate and the folks that are arrested go, go through us before they get there. And so I definitely want to urge the Maricopa County Attorney to drop those charges on those people and for our officers to be able to do what we can to make sure that the First Amendment rights are observed of those folks that were arrested. We saw last week what terror looks like on the folks who, who stormed the Capitol. There is a stark difference between how those who, those who protested the elections here at the county office and the, and how they were given fencing. They were given sidewalks. They were protected. And they too tried to storm the elections department, and I don't believe any arrests were made. And I know that's a different jurisdiction, but it is very different than those who demanded justice and stated that Black Lives Matter in front of the police headquarters. Those folks were met with tear gas, rubber bullets, and, and these prosecutions that we saw, these copy and paste prosecutions, and then further the, the gang charges we saw later. What I, what we saw at the police headquarters was not only were folks not given space like they were at the county recorder's office, but actually the sidewalk was blocked off and people were pushed onto the street, which led to a lot of those blocking the thoroughway charges. There's definitely a lack of transparency and accountability on the decision-making process of the, of the police department. Like I stated, from the cut and paste probable cause statements on, on those hundreds of arrests. And, and so I have some questions I'd like to ask on surveillance specifically. So I'm gonna go one by one. Last time I tried to ask two or three questions at a time, so it might take a little longer, but I, I hope this is easier for everyone. Who within the department monitors the social media of civil rights organizations?
Mr. Chairman, members of Subcommittee, Councilman Garcia, so your, your question specific to civil rights activists, I don't know that that applies, but we do have investigators both in the Homeland Defense Department, criminal investigators, as well as those who work in our Community Engagement Bureau that monitor social media. And we do that for several reasons. First, to help us gauge what we will be facing. Sometimes you can get a little intelligence as far as how many people will come out to an event, also get some idea as far as what their intent is. And so social media is one tool we use to kind of help us prepare for, for what we may face.
Okay, so you may not deem them or talk to, talk about them as civil rights organizations. So what, what groups does the department monitor?
Mr. Chairman, members of Subcommittee, we do not monitor any specific group. We, we search for certain words as far as, say there's an event in, in Phoenix or a protest. Typically, there's some name attached to it, and, and we will follow that communication that goes back and forth, again, searching for intelligence to help us prepare so that we can keep people safe that are, are coming out.
And who makes that decision on, on who to follow or what are we following?
Mr. Chairman, members of Subcommittee, again, we're not following any particular person. We're following chatter as it relates to whatever event is coming to Phoenix.
Okay. Which, is there, for example, we've seen a spike in white supremacy in the valley and, and we saw a horrific event yesterday as, as Vice Mayor Good's funeral services were, I'm, I'm still shaken by it, were hacked and, and there was an attack there. Is there any white supremacist groups that the Phoenix Police Department monitors?
Mr. Chairman, members of Subcommittee, obviously, law enforcement agencies, both federal, state, local, use social media as a tool to try to gather their intelligence from all threats that could potentially impact our community. So without going into specifics of, you know, how we go about that, we, we, we search for and monitor any and all threats, and that's social media, intelligence from talking to people on the street, any and all ways that we can help prepare for whatever is coming, you know?
So there's not a file that says these are the Black Lives Matters protests, these are the immigration protests, or white supremacist, or so on?
Mr. Chairman, members of Subcommittee, again, without going into specifics of how we prepare for these things, I will say that we use any and all tools to gather intelligence to help us protect the community.
Okay. Do you, is there intelligence files that are kept on, on activists or organizations?
Mr. Chairman, members of Subcommittee, I am not aware of any files on any particular person as it relates to, I think you mentioned, civil rights organizations or Black Lives Matter. No, I am not aware of that.
So there's, there's no files on, on any individuals? Because I've, I've had officers come up to me and tell me that there's a file on myself from, from the work I've done in the community. And so you're saying there's no files on particular activists?
Mr. Chairman, members of Subcommittee, I, I think the word "file" is kind of broad, so let's talk about, you know, somebody who's arrested, there is a case file. There is a case within our records management system, so the word "file" is awful broad, and I don't want to make you a statement that, you know, may not be accurate.
So, okay, the, the word "file" is broad. Is there a data, for example, Carlos Garcia, the activist organizer, is there a place where information is held for someone that's organized marches or, or been on the streets?
Mr. Chairman, members of Subcommittee, again, I am not aware of any files on you or people that organize protests in the street. Again, we are searching for intelligence so that we can prepare for the event that's coming, so that we can protect the people in the event as well as police officers in the community.
So last time we were told that certain folks were seen repeatedly at different protests, and that's why they could have been targeted or they were arrested or targeted. How is that information kept? You know, there was, there's Bruce Franks, there's other folks who spoke about things. How do you keep or where do you keep information? For example, on the people you see in one protest, let's say you just saw a crowd, I imagine you have to write it down or put it down somewhere in order for you all to do what you did, which was the next time around, arrest them. How is that information kept?
Mr. Chairman, members of Subcommittee, so certainly as the summer progressed, we had certain people who came out multiple times. And, you know, it'd be great if every time a crime was committed, an officer could go out and arrest that person immediately, but crowds present many challenges. We don't want to escalate a situation, so we certainly don't want to send officers in immediately when there are thousands of people in the street, because that, that's not going to turn out well. So there were people that we later identified through subsequent protests or subsequent events. And so if we had probable cause to arrest them from, let's say, May 30th, but we didn't know who they were, however, they came back on May 31st or June 1st, and we subsequently identify them, then certainly if we had the opportunity to do it safely, we would arrest them for their, their criminal act on May 30th, if that makes sense.
It does, but if there isn't any, a place where you write them down or create a list of folks, then does that mean that second time or when they were arrested, it was based on officer's memory, or, or how did that happen?
Mr. Chairman, members of Subcommittee, so typically, again, if we, 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 after each of these events, a, an incident report was written, documenting what we observed, what we did. We would document crimes that we observed, document the probable cause, and, and state that the person was unknown at that time. If we gathered intelligence later on that identified them, we do a supplement to the original report, and then again, if we had the opportunity to arrest the person, then we'd interview them about their actions on whatever day is in question.
So if we wanted to find people that were arrested because they were there a second time, in the incident reports is where we would find a name or a picture or something that identified them?
Mr. Chairman, members of Subcommittee, Councilman Garcia, so the original report would be unknown because the person wasn't known. Now, if we knew who it was, we certainly would include their name, but a lot of these times, I believe what you're talking about is that the identity of the person was later learned in subsequent events, or as we talked about earlier, through using social media, open source social media as a tool, there, there are various ways that we identified people. Because that was our goal. We wanted to identify those that were out committing crime so that those that wanted to come out and peacefully protest, so they could do it. And again, to, our focus was keeping the community safe and those who wanted to peacefully protest and the officer safe.
Okay, so that, that's where I'm kind of stuck and confused on, on the sense of, of where the, the crime was committed and how you tracked it. And so it's not making sense to me in my head how you're going back. So is it, is it that we're using our surveillance technology, like the, the truck that's out there or body camera? How is it that we're able to go back and say, yes, these, these people have repeatedly been here?
Mr. Chairman, members of Subcommittee, Councilman Garcia, so certain groups, certain members of the, the protester came out, I mean, they, they, they use social media to advertise that they were there. Sometimes they use social media to actually capture unlawful activity. Often, they talk, spoke with officers. I mean, one of the, the tasks of the Community Engagement Bureau is to make relationships with people that are coming out there, because through those relationships, our hope is that we can de-escalate situations from ever escalating to violence. And, and so certainly there were people that were known. There were a lot of people who were known that were never arrested by the department because they didn't commit any criminal acts.
Alright, so two things from that comment. So, so there is, going back to my first social media question, there is people you're tracking on social media, because that's how you would go back and find that they were there. And so what is it that you're searching for on social media when you're gonna try to find someone? And so you've said right now, you know, they basically outed themselves, similar to what we saw at the Capitol, I'm assuming. They posted on social media, "I was there." Are you looking in that social media post, you know, if it's a picture, are they actively on the street, or how are you coming to the conclusion that they were committing a crime when they were there?
Mr. Chairman, members of Subcommittee, Councilman Garcia, much like you, you reference the Capitol, I mean, if you're, social media is a good tool. It's an open source tool. People do put information out there that implicate them in crime. You reference the Capitol. If, if I was an investigator going about looking for people involved in unlawful activities at the Capitol, you start searching the event of the Capitol. Typically, when people post their activity, they reference, you know, let's use the Capitol as example, they'll, they'll reference the Capitol, so that gets you a start, and then you're, you're looking through various forms of social media, trying to identify, one, the criminal act, and two, the, the person or persons committing that criminal act.
Okay. So you, you said something else about the community officers and, and Councilmember, Councilman Nowakowski made a good point last time that, you know, back, back in the day, there was protests, there was actions, and there was good relationship between the organizers and the, and the community officers. What I heard you say right now is troubling, because I would expect and hope that those community officers are there to serve, protect, and figure out best ways for people to observe their First Amendment rights. What you said right now is that the community officers are being used to identify people so that they can later be arrested, or their relationships are being used to prosecute people later. Is that what I heard?
Mr. Chairman, members of Subcommittee, Councilman Garcia, if that's what you took from it, certainly not what I meant. So you were very specific to how people are arrested. It, it's difficult to arrest someone when you don't know who they are or where they are. So if we know who a person is, and we know that they committed a crime, and we have probable cause that they committed a crime, we would follow up with that person to arrest them. So as far as the community engagement people, they want to make relationships with all that's out there, not so that we can later make arrests, so that we can work with them to keep the event peaceful, and so that no unlawful activity happens because arrests are the last thing that we want to do.
Okay, and I'm, I'm moving on from these questions, but it just, it's hard to believe again that you're saying, "We know people." And, and I know and I hope that when you say "we know people," there's, there's factual data or a list or something compiled out there. You're saying there isn't. And so I find it hard to believe that we're just going based on officer memory or, or how, how we actually identify or know that we know people. So I, I hope we could have more conversations about that, and I really want to understand that process more. I wanted to ask questions about the Community Hiring Review Board. I don't know if you, you are aware of that, or that's something that's coming up later? Okay. So yeah, in, in this situation, I mean, I, I just want to make sure that, that as a city, we're making the distinction between... And I think everybody has the right to protest, whether I, I agree with them or not, and, and how the folks are treated at the recorder's office, I hope everybody could be treated. You know, they were given a protective fence, they were given the sidewalks, and they were taken care of. I even saw MCAO, MCSO officers handing them water, hanging out with them, having a whole different relationship than what I've seen with the Black Lives Matters or the police protests that we've seen. And so I hope we could strive for, for equity and being able to protect everyone's, everyone's rights. And, and I don't know if there's other people on the phone. I know Lola for sure sent a, a message to our office that she was on the phone and, and ready for comments. I think she was having some technical difficulties, so it would be great to hear from those, Chairman.
Alright, we have other council members that are, Councilmember, Betty, go ahead.
Thank you. Yeah, so I, you know, I mean, we've been, I think a lot of us have been following this for, for a little while. I think it's been a very emotional week, given what happened last week, given what happened yesterday. It's been, it's, it's been, it's been, it's been a little rough, but as everyone knows, I'm also about accountability and, and holding people accountable, right, for their, for their actions. I, I totally understand that, but then I also understand that and believe that people have the right to protest. Whether I like what they're protesting about and, or whether I don't like what they're protesting about, I think that's a right that people have and, and should be able to do that. I think that, you know, I want to urge the Maricopa County Attorney to drop some, drop some of these charges. There, there's some of these people that, that are being charged as gangsters. I, I feel like I've been working really hard for the last two years, and I know that other people have, but on a personal level, I've been working really hard to try to get programs in, into a lot of parts of my district. For students to be able to graduate from high school, for them to have an opportunity to go on, to go on to college, and for them to be able to have a better life, right? Like, you know, as a Latina, as an immigrant, as someone that grew up in South Central Los Angeles, I, I know what a lot of that stuff is like, and I know how important it is to have programming in our schools and being able to provide something better for, for our students. And, and it's something that I want to make sure... And, and it's something that I want to make sure that our students can have. But when we're charging them with felonies, like we're destroying their lives. And for me, like, you know, like once, once you do that and once someone knows that there's a felony on their record and that they're not going to be able to get a good job, then all, all of these issues that we all keep talking about, about, about disruption, about homelessness, it's never going to stop. It's going to be like an ending cycle if we continue to, you know, to do felonies on, on people that, that are, that are, that just there to protest. I understand that not everyone was there for the same reasons, but there, but there were a lot of people that were charged with felonies, that shouldn't have been charged with felonies. And I think that only makes it worse for all of us that are, that are trying to do the right thing and for everyone else that's trying to make this city a better place to live. And I know there's a lot of uncertainty out there, out there right now and, and we're trying to fix that and I think it's going to take all of us working together. And then, but charging, charging people with, with felonies, it's going, it, it, it doesn't make the, the situation better. So I, I would, I would like to urge and try to figure out a way, how do we get some, how do we get some of these charges dropped? Again, I, I am about accountability. I am about people, you know, peacefully marching. God knows that I've done many marches in, in, in my career, in my old career, but I, I do think that some of this is, is uncalled for. And if we want the city to continue to prosper, I, I would urge the county attorney to drop some of these charges. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Corey, is there anybody else on the phone that was, that was wanting to speak on this item that was listed?
Chairman, yes, we do. We have Edward Brown.
All righty, can we go ahead and listen to Edward Brown, please?
Hello?
Hello?
You're on.
My name is Edward Brown and August 5, 2018, the Phoenix PD tried to execute me for a probation violation. They shot me in the back and had the audacity to charge me with aggravated assault on a police officer, even though he was the one trying to kill me. I am one of many people suing the Phoenix, the city of Phoenix because of police violence. I am now in jail on false charges because the Maricopa County Attorney Office is in collusion with Phoenix PD and is trying to pressure me to sign a plea to justify your police forces' attempt to kill me over a probation violation. And I'm the-
Corey, is there, happens to be another person?
Chairman, yes, we have Lola in Sango.
All righty.
I'm, I'm sorry, Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
So Ann, Ann Ender wanted to speak on this issue. She's also on to speak on, on other stuff in, in the agenda today. But could we add her on to speak on, on this item as well? I guess it's been a little confusing for them to be able to choose some different items to speak on. So I'm not sure if she's there, but from what I understand, she's there and wanted to speak on that item.
Corey, was she put down to speak on this item?
Chairman, no, she was not.
Is there a person that, that has been registered on the phone right now?
Chairman, my understanding is Lola in Sango is on the line. I'm not sure if she's still having technical difficulties or not. Oh, she actually logged off.
Okay. And is that person that the, that the council member is talking about, is she on the line right now?
Tell, Chairman, yes, she is.
Can we add her into the list of people?
Uh, yes, sir. Ann Ender, is that who?
Yes. Good morning. Thank you, Chairman Nowakowski and Committee Members and Councilmember, Councilwoman Guardado. Thank you very much for making this exception. I, I first of all want to, oh gosh, I'm sorry. I first of all want to applaud Commander Lopez's composure and everything that they do and his experience to be able to speak to Councilmember Garcia's questions. Some of you are aware that I'm married to a Navy SEAL. And in 2010, he was deployed at the age of 46 and actually was involved in the intelligence to hunt down Mr. Bin Laden. Had Councilmember Garcia been asking the kind of questions he's asking today of our police department who are doing a fantastic job, we probably would be, have been attacked again. There's a reason that intelligence is intelligence and it's kept in the hands of professionals that know what to do with it. I came down to many of the protests this year and I saw nothing but Phoenix police officers who had worked double shifts, standing there protecting peaceful protesters. So I don't know why we are going to continue to pounce on the chief and the rest of our police department who are doing an absolutely fantastic job. So thank you. I appreciate you letting me speak.
Thank you very much. Any other comments?
Yeah, Chairman, may I respond to that?
Absolutely. Councilmember Garcia?
Thank you. I, I think that's, it's part of the problem. I think the fact that this, this person just equated the folks that are trying to make our, our police department better, that are fighting for their families and their communities, equating them to Bin Laden is, is a type of xenophobia that kind of allows this to continue. And, and I just want to make clear that I too was a lot, a lot of the protests. And what I saw is, is young folks, black folks, brown folks, white folks, all coming together, fighting for a cause. And, and fighting for a cause that, that is important, that wasn't just in Phoenix. It was a national movement of, of, of demanding to, to stop the murdering of, of innocent people. And like I, I said at the beginning, I don't know what happened in the, in the five OISs that happened in the last, officer involved shootings that happened in the last week, but that, that number is really high. And the fact that we're still unable to have an Office of Accountability, a Civilian Review Board and, and true community engagement on, on how these decisions are made, both in the field where people are losing their lives and also while these protests are happening. And so I, I really want to urge the police department, the community at large and everyone to start understanding that the, the folks that are protesting, which is their right, their First Amendment right, are not the enemy. They're actually folks that are suffering, that are suffering at the hands of police and want this rectified. And so I hope that, that those feelings that, that caller just expressed are, are not how, how our police department feels. That, and, and it's exactly why I think that line of questioning is important for us to understand. And I'm pretty sure if we ask the chief and the police department, they do not see, or I hope they do not see, those folks protesting as an equivalent to, to Bin Laden or an enemy of the state. On contrary, what we saw at the Capitol last week was domestic terrorism. And that was recognized by both parties that it was domestic terrorism. And, and so I just, again, want to have equitable opportunities for people to observe their First Amendment rights and hope that our department is, is transparent in the way that they're making these arrests. And as we move forward with this conversation, I will, I will continue to ask the same level of questions and, and maintain, I think it's our duty in this subcommittee to try to maintain accountability and, and seek answers that the community wants. So thank you.
Chairman, we have one more speaker.
All righty.
Sandra Castro Solis.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Sandra Castro Solis and I am a, a community organizer with the, with Puente Movement based out of Phoenix, Arizona. And I also want to comment, you know, to the events that played and, and, you know, the, the abusive use of force by Phoenix Police Department over the summer. I mean, we can even go back to one of the times that Trump was in office and protesters exercising their First Amendment right were met with an excessive use of force, including chemical, non-lethal cap, chemical weapons, rubber bullets and all of the different use of force. Now, fast forward to last summer, we saw this and we continuously saw this. And we saw not only the city council continue to, some of the council members to side with police department and further criminalize protesters, like Councilmember Garcia said, using and invoking their First Amendment right to really speak on a broader issue that is affecting the nation overall. To say that they used excessive use of force is absolutely correct. To say that there has been zero accountability by certain council members is definitely correct. And, you know, Puente, we are demanding that there is accountability, that, you know, officers who have a continuous history in using this excessive use of force towards protesters be reprimanded. One other item that I would like to focus on that happened during the summer of these series of events was the abuse of Operations Order 4.48 and the criminalization that not only happened towards protesters, but the DACA ment, DACA recipients and immigrant communities that were there. So, you know, during this time, Phoenix Police Department was arresting and giving higher felony sentencing and ended up actually causing DACA students to go through the, to, to not only be arrested and criminalized, but actually have, go through deportation proceedings to where two undocumented individuals-
Wrap it up, your thoughts real quick?
I am wrapping it up, but it is, what I need to, to express is the fact that two people who weren't even protesting were given felony charges because Phoenix Police Department was giving what, all these different egregious charges and they are still sitting in detention. So what I also want to shine light on is not only the abuse of force, but also the misuse of Operations Order 4.48 and criminalizing protesters. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So any other speakers?
Chairman, that was the last one.
All righty. Well, thank you, Corey. Commander Lopez, thank you. Just some clarification really quick. The community action officers are there for what reason? To help out the community in which ways?
Mr. Chairman, yes, the community act, engagement officers are, are, their role is really to build those relationships and to be available to the community. So, so both ways, we, we want to kind of extend that bridge so that we, we know more people in the community, so that we can work through things and, and help, help sometimes prepare these events so that we can keep them safe. We certainly do not have any issue with peaceful protest and we want to make sure that people are allowed to do that and they can do it safely.
And just for the record, I mean, a lot of these community action officers are the ones that close off the streets, make sure that, that the route is secure and they're there to actually protect the protesters, right?
Chairman Nowakowski, that is correct. Yes, one of the challenges in this event was that we weren't, we weren't able to establish those relationships and a lot of the activity of the, a lot of the activity during the event was really unplanned and it, and it made it a challenge for us.
And the one event that we're talking about is the May 30th event? Is that the event where the windows and people were lighting up police cars and trash cans throughout downtown Phoenix? And not just in downtown Phoenix, but throughout the, the state of Arizona?
Chairman Nowakowski, that is correct. On May 30th, there was extensive damage to downtown Phoenix. The damage included broken windows, graffiti, fire damage. The front doors of police headquarters were smashed. Crime lab was graffiti. There was extensive damage in downtown Phoenix.
And just like the state, the, the city Capitol, I mean, the Capitol at Washington, we're looking at videos to go back to those individuals that created the damage and that charged into the Capitol building at that time. So I believe that social media, I don't believe police are there searching, looking for individuals that are breaking the law or prior to a march, targeting individuals. Is that true or false? Y'all look at, at social media and try to target the leaders of that march to kind of stop that march or how's that, is that true or false?
Chairman Nowakowski, social media is a good tool to help us prepare for the event because we get some information as far as how many people are coming, what is their intent. And if there is criminal activity, it's a good tool to help identify the criminal activity as well as who committed it.
I know a lot of people called our office that were caught up in the march. They were in the wrong place at the wrong time with individuals breaking into our court buildings and stuff. And the police retained a lot of individuals that weren't involved, but they were, they were in the wrong place at the wrong time and then they were released afterwards. So I think a lot of that goes on. I just want to make sure that our police officers aren't targeting individuals, our police officers aren't using social media before a march happens to go after or have these target marks on people during the, during the marches. And I don't believe that's happening. Is that true or false?
Chairman Nowakowski, that is true.
All right. Any other questions for my colleagues? With that, we'll go into item number three. Thank you so much, Commander. We'll go into item number three, Community Hiring Review Board.
Mr. Chairman, we have Assistant Chief Sean Patrick Conley here to talk about that.
All right, Chief, it's all yours.
Good morning, Chairman Nowakowski and members of the subcommittee. We're, we're grateful this morning to bring you some information for discussion related to a positive item, which is our Community Hiring Review Board. Let me give you some of the three goals related to the Community Hiring Review Board. The first is to enhance transparency of the police officer hiring process. This is a very important process as it is related to the future of our organization and we think it's incumbent that the community be engaged in this, this part of our, of our systems. Number two is increase the quality of applicants throughout, throughout the community to include recruitment. We believe that this can also be a positive recruitment tool in addition to a filtering tool for hiring. Number three, foster community input on the future of the police department, which I just alluded to. Let me give you a little bit of a, a, a background on what the hiring process looks like. Before you have a, an upside down pyramid, it all starts with the applicant pool. That is where we draw from and recruit from. From that applicant pool, that applicant would embark upon a written exam. We recently, pre-COVID, traveled with the direction of Mr. DeHoney and Chief Williams to Washington DC and engaged a new company called I, 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 IMP, IP, IMPCA. Sorry about that. And we're, we're proud of our new process. It, it has research based on adverse impact. In addition, anybody can take this test online around the world. We then proceed to the physical agility test, the background investigation, the polygraph. And then this is where we've interviewed the oral board process that has the community interview. It would be after this community interview that we would then give a conditional hire. They would proceed to a medical, a psychological extensive exam and then the hire. The structure of the Community Hiring Review Board is, is made up of two community members. They do partake in a, in a background interview and they do serve a, a two-year term. We have included, we believe our professional civilian staff are a very important part of our organization. So we have included one non-sworn supervisor, a sworn supervisor, and then the board chairperson who is non-evaluating is our commander of the Employment Services Bureau. The community member volunteers were, were selected and drawn using the assistance of the Community Engagement Bureau, which has an extensive relationship and conduit into our community. And then the precinct commanders and those CAO teams and net teams who on a daily basis are engaging community in problem solving and collaboration. This involves the citizen advisory boards, the 12 advisory boards, the, the chief leads, those neighborhood leaders I mentioned. We also leaned into block walk group and local business leaders. Here's a little breakup of the gender and race and ethnicity of the current 35 members of this pool. 60% of them are white, 17% are black and 23% are Hispanic. The gender is 43% are male and 57% are female. So training is a really important- So, training is a really important pro- part of this process. We believe it's important for the community and the members sitting on the board to have an understanding of, of the hiring process, both from the city HR perspective and then internally within this, the police department. So the, the community members attend a, a two-hour training session where they're exposed to a lot of this information. And then the employee members are, are required to complete a one-hour training session. Um, the interview process um, will be held monthly. Obviously, it's contingent on volume in recruiting. Um, community members uh, were consulted and did assist in the design of the questions that are presented in the oral board. We thought it would be incredibly impactful to have those community members have a say in what the questions uh, were. Um, we have limited it to twenty minutes and every police recruit and in- importantly, a lateral that comes to us from another police department must partake in this process. At the conclusion of the applicant's interview, uh, each board member um, will submit a, a personal subjective evaluation of the applicant. Um, we didn't want to complicate it with a number or scoring system, so it's a simple recommendation or, or not recommendation based on their experience and, and the answers from the applicant. So in summary, uh, our partnership is moving forward. Community uh, involvement in recruiting and identifying and selecting the, the, the future of this police department um, i- is integral to us and we are tremendously committed to this process within the Employment Services Bureau. Uh, maintaining open channels of communication through this process. We've already reaped some benefits from a recruiting perspective on this and the projected start date is at the end of this month. Um, obviously, all of this is contingent on the restrictions imposed to us due to COVID, but we have built and are prepared to deliver a virtual uh, product. But with that, that is, I'm concluded. If there are any questions?
Do I have any, um, thank you Chief, any questions for my colleagues? Councilmember Garcia?
Thank you Chairman. Um, who will choose the, the community member volunteers? Who chooses those folks?
Chairman Noakowski, members of the subcommittee and Councilman Garcia. So those thirty-five applicants uh, were chosen, well, first of all, we were, they were selected, as I indicated, um, through our Community Engagement Bureau and then through our, our communication in, in the precincts. Um, ultimately, those names came to Commander Consoli and myself and we were involved in the selection of those.
So if, let's say someone that's listening or, or someone in the community wants to get involved, is there a way that they could submit their name to this pool?
Chairman Noakowski and members of the subcommittee and Councilman Garcia, we welcome uh, additional range and breadth within the pool. So if there are people, um, we would simply ask them to reach out through their community relationships. If they don't have any uh, relationships in the community uh, that exist that have communication with us, um, w- we're more than happy to connect with you and/or via our social media to, to, to bring them into the pool.
How long would this pool remain? Is there a time limit where you bring new folks in?
Yeah, we, we don't want the pool to become stagnant over time and have the same people involved in the selection. We think that pool needs to evolve with the evolution with what's going on in the community. So it's two years um, that we'll rotate, rotate that pool out. And I think what's really important too is um, um, there is a background investigation that has to go on with that. So we just want to make sure we're very open and honest with the fact that that process will, will, will start once you, you commit to it.
Okay. And who's part of the group of the stakeholders that came up with the set of questions?
Chairman Noakowski and members of the subcommittee. So in collaboration, um, the Community Engagement Bureau, obviously, all of our outreach within that bureau. Um, and then within the precincts, uh, members were identified uh, in the community and then those community members um, provided and submitted questions and, and then we agreed upon them.
Okay, and is there, so the way it sounds is you've already come up with a set of questions and when these interviews are happening, you can only ask those questions, right? Why, why is it that we're only limiting to those questions that were written beforehand?
Chairman Noakowski, members of the subcommittee and Councilman Garcia, um, we believe it's important to have some structure. This is part of a hiring process. And so we, we can't have randomness uh, within the process where one applicant uh, received the four questions and three or four additional questions and the other didn't because then we could expose ourselves to some unfair treatment. But um, I'm, I'm sure if you were to see these questions, uh, you would be proud of them. I think they reflect the type of questions that we should be asking applicants uh, from a community service perspective.
Thank you. No, I, 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 I thank you for, for considering this opportunity to engage community um, on, on who, on them deciding on who gets to serve them. Um, I hope this is an attempt to weed out, you know, racist or, or people that might come with some prejudice. Um, wonder, I mean, I know we, we look at social media for officers as well, but I just, I just a little bit of, the question is, what are the intentions behind this? I, I think, is it that? Is it to make sure that the folks coming in aren't coming in with prejudice or, or racist beliefs, or, or what is the actual intent behind this? Just, just to be clear.
Chairman Noakowski, members of the subcommittee and Councilman Garcia. So thi- this is a, this is a really important question that you ask. And I think um, wh- when I look at my peers in the executive team and members of, of this organization, we are tremendous, in our heart and soul, we are tremendously committed um, to hiring the best people that represent this community at the highest levels. And w- and, and so this isn't a checkbox for us. This isn't something for us to just say we're doing. Um, I, I know the background investigators, I spoke to them personally. Uh, they think this is a fabulous thing and I think it's, at its true nature, it is us continuing to evolve and ensure that we are, are, are building the best community-driven police department into the future. Um, and so as it relates to social media, um, a- as you know, um, officers' behavior and/or citizens' behavior on social media is a true, is a really good indicator at times of, of the type of character and person we have in our organization or in the community. So part of that hiring process is a social media scrub. Um, where, uh, and, and I personally have, uh, are involved in, in looking at when we see something and if it doesn't meet our standards and is an offensive, um, that, that is a deal breaker for us.
Thank you.
Um, Chief, how do we ensure that the makeup of the committee is the same makeup of the city of Phoenix?
Chairman Noakowski, thank you for that question. Um, we, we strive. Um, and we work really hard to ensure that not only the makeup of our organization mirrors the community we serve, but, but our boards and our panels and our outreach. And so when you see the twelve advisory boards and then you see some of the diversity that we engage within the business, the healthcare, the youth sectors, um, we do our best. We are hyper cognizant of the fact that we want it to mirror and reflect those numbers. Um, and so if you look at the numbers we had um, for, for wa- white and African-American, um, I think we're doing really well. I think where we need to continue to work and, and work on and I'm open to collaboration to see how we can spawn additional interest would be within the Hispanic community. I think we're running around twenty-three percent on this particular panel and that's a little below um, where our community is. So we're open to expanding that and, and that's our goal at the end of the day.
Alrighty. Uh, Chief, the other, the other thing I was going to ask you is where does it fall on the recruitment um, training? Is that the beginning, the middle, or at the end, the interview process?
Chairman Noakowski, let me, let me help, I, I, let me understand your question. So within the recruitment process, recruitment goes on in the community. Somebody from the applicant pool expresses interest and then, then they submit and they embark upon the process that I detailed in the upside down pyramid. And at the bottom third of that, you'll see this interview process. Once they've gone through all that, um, and there is this recommendation from this community-driven board and they've passed everything, then they would go off um, to our academy, um, which has a pre-academy, academy and a post-academy that, that runs twenty-seven weeks and almost a thousand hours of training.
Okay, so it's right before the academy, right?
Yes, sir.
Um, that's all the questions I have. Any other of my colleagues? With that, do we have any ca- um, callers on this item?
Chairman, we have one caller.
And- Take that caller.
You guys are going to get sick of me. Um, thank you Chairman Noakowski, committee members and, and thank you um, Chief Connolly. Um, I appreciate the opportunity to public, publicly express my gratitude for being nominated and approved for the Community Hiring Review Board. As a neighborhood leader, I quickly became aware of um, that public safety in our neighborhoods is a collaboration with our residents, myself and our precincts. Go DHP and our other neighborhood leaders. Um, collaborations such as quarterly meetings with commanders to discuss crime and issues in our communities and understand what we can do to have an impact. Also, consistent communication with our CAOs. So last, I hope to partner that experience in working with um, our police department with the thirty-five years of experience I've had in the business world. This is an honor that I take seriously and I believe it's an opportunity to make a contribution to our community and city. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other um, questions for my colleagues? If not, thank you Chief. And we're on to item number four. This is an item that was brought to our attention by, at that time, our Vice Mayor Betty and um, basically talking about their dispatch um, update. So um, we're ready for that.
So Mister Chairman, we have Lori Bays, our Director of Human Resources, coming to the table to address the Police Communications Dispatch item.
Good morning, members of the subcommittee. I'm here to discuss with you today some um, items that came up, as I understand, in the December Subcommittee meeting related to police communications dispatchers. And in addition to the salary information that was requested, I will be presenting to you some workgroup recommendations from a workgroup that was created to address attracting and retaining qualified candidates in these positions. So, to begin with the information that was requested by the subcommittee, I'd like to talk about the salary survey that my staff conducted related to police communications dispatchers across the valley. We regularly look at compensation for various positions. Um, and this was a position that we hadn't looked at in a couple of years. So we did request updated data uh, in response to the subcommittee's request related to police communications dispatchers. We looked at cities across the valley. You can see the list on the slide here uh, from Avondale to Glendale, Mesa, Scottsdale, Tempe, et cetera. We looked not only at the salary range, uh, which is somewhat important, but what is most important is the actual average salary of employees and what they are actually being paid in those jurisdictions. The survey average for the cities in the valley was fifty-four thousand or is fifty-four thousand seven hundred and sixty-six dollars. Our average, actual average salary in Phoenix is fifty-five thousand three hundred and fifty-six dollars annually. So when you're looking at it from an average compensation perspective, Phoenix fares fairly well. Uh, we are about one percent above the valley average. This is, amounts to almost six hundred dollars per year. I will point out however, that when you look at us in rank order, um, while we are above the average, we are uh, the, we are fourth in the top four of the valley cities and the actual average salaries there. This is important because Phoenix um, is the largest city and also is the city with the highest workload of all of the groups, um, all of the cities and all of the workgroups within those cities. And some of the differences are notable. So for example, in some of the cities uh, that we compare with, they may have an average call volume of up to twenty calls per day or an average of twenty calls per day. In Phoenix, our dispatchers may take up to two hundred calls per day on a busy day. And so that's a significant difference in the amount of work and the amount of um, the number of situations that they're managing through in a given shift. Beyond that, our staff also routinely work with more critical incidents than some of the other valley cities may experience. For example, they deal with a higher number of collision calls, foot pursuits, shooting calls, et cetera. Beyond that, uh, the number of officers that an average city dispatcher in other cities is managing on a given shift is between ten and fifteen officers. For Phoenix, on a shift where we may have shift overlap or a double shift, it could be as many as eighty officers that a dispatcher is managing on a given shift. So again, a significant difference in workload there. I mentioned to you that I wanted to discuss some of the committee recommendations from a workgroup that was put together in August of twenty nineteen and worked through March of twenty nine, or, or March of twenty twenty, excuse me, with recommendations from that workgroup going to the city manager in May of twenty twenty, which of course was in the beginning months of our current pandemic. This workgroup was formed to brainstorm ideas and find some sustainable solutions to improve employee well-being, to foster overall job satisfaction, increase retention and enhance our recruitment options for our civilian response workgroup, which does include our nine-one-one dispatchers. I'm going to be discussing with you today the committee recommendations. However, today's item on the subcommittee agenda is slated for information and discussion only. So these are not recommendations to the subcommittee. These are recommendations from the workgroup that were presented to the city manager um, for our city's consideration. The workgroup was made up of employees from multiple city departments, uh, including police, fire, aviation and human resources. It was also made up of rep- representatives from our labor partner groups, AFSMI Local Twenty-nine Sixty and ASPATIA, who represent dispatchers, as well as District Four staff and uh, some uh, additional staff, including a registered health psychologist uh, to provide some subject matter expertise in that area. We talked about some of the challenges that our nine-one-one communications dispatchers experience on their jobs. Uh, they work in a twenty-four hour, round-the-clock environment. It's a very psychologically stressful environment. Um, they manage highly emotional and demanding calls that often end in unfavorable results. And this can result in some very traumatic experiences for our staff. With the limited number of employees that we have working at any given time due to our high vacancy and turnover rates in the nine-one-one communications dispatcher group, our management regularly struggle, struggles to maintain the minimum staffing levels. This means that scheduling time off for our employees is extremely challenging. They often have to uh, work their regular day off just to take another scheduled workday off. And sometimes uh, our staff even find themselves in a position where they call out last minute using protected leave just to have a day off from work. This burden that is placed on our remaining employees um, to manage through these callouts results in mandatory holdovers, which compels employees to stay beyond their shift to make sure that we can staff the phone lines. It's estimated that in this career, seven to eight years is the average burnout rate. Um, and often uh, staff do not stay beyond that time period. Some of the recommendations that the committee made to improve these circumstances is to actually overstaff these workgroups, meaning that we would have more staff than we truly need uh, to staff our nine-one-one call centers in order to make sure that when uh, leave is necessary, whether it's uh, an unscheduled leave or a scheduled vacation, that those workgroups can be staffed. Um, to also expand our police communications mentorship program to support staff in learning how to manage through a very difficult job, a very difficult position. And also to develop career paths, to not be afraid of that burnout rate, but to necess- but to plan for it and to help our staff use the skillsets that they gain as a nine-one-one dispatcher to be successful in other uh, jobs later in their career. Beyond that, the workgroup did make some recruiting and hiring recommendations. Some of those things are to consider using personality or psychological profiles during the interview process. Um, we do regularly struggle to find good candidates and it's not a job that's for everyone. Um, and, and doing some sort of a, a pre-employment test um, to determine personality may help to see if someone really is a good fit for the position or not. We've also done a lot of work to uh, reduce the applicant to, application to hire timeframe. Um, but to continue to work on that, there are many elements- There are many elements to the hiring process for a 911 communications dispatcher. Some of those things include typing tests, which we have reduced down to one rather than two, as well as interviews and a polygraph test, which is something that we've been discussing, whether or not that is something that we want to continue as it can sometimes inhibit the hiring process. There are also things that we can do, such as looking at, at things that may qualify someone to come into the position at a higher step in the pay range, whether that's a certification or a degree or other experience that may qualify them to be hired above the first step in the pay range. Additionally, marketing these positions is something that we've been working on over the last year, talking about how these positions really make a difference in our community, how they are open to candidate pools that may be non-traditionally viewed as potential candidates, individuals who may be stay-at-home parents, who may actually prefer to work odd hours so that they can be home with their children when they would like to be graduate students or other students who may prefer to work overnight shifts or weekend shifts so that they can complete their schooling. And this gives us an opportunity to also highlight some of our incredible benefits of the City of Phoenix, like tuition reimbursement. So we've been working on all of those things. This is a constant quest for HR, as well as the Police Department and the Fire Department, who share in the challenges of recruiting and retaining staff in the 911 call centers. And we are working hard every day to implement some of these workgroup recommendations, as well as to, you know, meet the staffing challenges that we have. And I'm happy to answer any questions that the Subcommittee has.
Thank you, Lori. Any questions? Just Councilmember?
I have a question. Thank you. Lori, you're working on all this. When do you think you're going to have it accomplished? I'm very concerned about, you just say you're working on it, you're working on it, you're trying to do it, but I want to know, when do you expect to have real results?
Thank you. Yes, thank you for that question, Mr. Chair, members of the Subcommittee, Vice Mayor Williams. The workgroup recommendations, as I mentioned, were submitted to the city manager just as the pandemic began. And so some of those recommendations we can move forward with and we can implement and we are, such as the streamlining of the hiring process, eliminating the one typing test we've already done. We no longer require resumes. We're working, we're already, you know, accomplishing some of those things. There are other things that are part of the recommendations that are not within the control of our current department budget. Those are the things like overstaffing, those workgroups would be something that we would need to bring back as a budgetary recommendation, and it was not something that was considered for the 2021 budget, just simply due to the pandemic situation and the uncertainty at the time. It would certainly be something that I would support further discussion about going into our next budget cycle and looking at overstaffing those workgroups, as mentioned, so that we can have the additional positions to compensate for the vacancy rates that I'm afraid are going to be a challenge to minimize, just given that the, the difficulty of the job, the hours. It's an extremely difficult job to do, and so to maintain those positions at the, the full level is, is a challenge. So having additional positions would be an extremely big help to the departments in order to maintain a vacancy rate that's more manageable.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Councilmember Delmo.
Is it too late to make this a priority? It sounds like something that really should be examined and pushed forward.
I believe that you have a supportive Councilmember, Betty, that's really trying to push this through for all the different departments. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Councilmember Betty?
Thank you. So I just have a, I mean, thank, thank you for that and, and thank you for those numbers. I just have a couple of questions. So when you compare, so we can go back to the, to the, to the salary chart with Tempe. So it, it seems like, right, Tempe has the better, better, better wages. My question is, it's like, in comparison from Phoenix to Tempe, how many, how many officers are operators dealing with in Tempe versus Phoenix?
Mr. Chair, members of the Subcommittee, Councilwoman Maradato, I do not have that information. I can get that for you. All I know is their volume of calls and what they're dealing with on an average daily basis. I don't have their, their staff numbers.
And then the other, and then my other question is, do you know if these other cities are also having retention issues?
Yes. Mr. Chair, members of the Subcommittee, Councilwoman Maradato, yes, this is a significant issue across the industry for communications dispatchers. These jobs traditionally do run a much higher vacancy rate than other municipal positions, simply because of the, the challenging nature of the job, which I discussed. So it is common for other cities to have high vacancy rates as well. Ours may be particularly high in comparison, although others are still high, because of the volume of the workload that we have in comparison. So if you can work for Phoenix, for example, and have to manage up to 200 calls per day, or you can work for another city and have, you know, an average of 20 calls per day and make approximately the same amount of money, some of our dispatchers have chosen to do that. And, and, you know, understandably, I think all of us can see why that might be the case. So while, and that was my point in saying that while our average salary is competitive, when you simply look at the numbers, when you look at the workload, it is not quite an apples-to-apples comparison.
Right. And, and that's what I was thinking, you know, that we're not comparing apples to apples. Like I, I would like to see, what is it that another big city outside of Arizona is doing? What are, you know, what are, and I, and I don't know what city that is. I don't know if it's in Texas, if it's where, where that's at, where we can compare that and see what their retention is like and what are the different things that they offer to workers to try to figure out how to, how to, how to, how to, how do, how do they retain workers? Obviously, the first thing that pops in my head is salaries. I think that, you know, I, from, from what I'm looking here, it, it does seem that's a, that's a huge issue that we should definitely try to deal with. But I would like to see, what is it that other cities are doing outside of Arizona? You know, that are big cities, right? Like another city, I'm not exactly who's the fourth largest, but maybe compare it to them and to, and to those other cities to try to figure out what is it that they're doing that maybe we can learn from them? I don't, I don't know if you have answers to that right now, or have you ever looked into that?
Mr. Chair, members of the Subcommittee, no, we have not looked into what other large cities have doing, have been doing. We typically have our comparison group for this job classification as our Valley agencies, simply because that's who we compete with for talent. But we are more than happy to research what some of the larger cities are doing and, and how successful they are or perhaps are not in attracting and retaining their staff. So we can look into that and report back.
And then the other thing I, I would suggest as well as we're dealing with this, is talking to our own operators, maybe doing a survey amongst them to be like, okay, what, you know, like on year six, especially with the folks that have been here more than seven years, from what you're saying is, you're saying that we lose operators after six years? So then what, what, you know, like what is it that has kept them here? And what are the changes that they feel that we should be making to making sure that, that newer operators would actually stay? I think it's also maybe just talking to them a little bit more. I don't know if we've done that already, but talking to them and, and figuring out with them, okay, how do we, how do we change this dynamic? How do we retain? What are the things that we need to change? I know that I've spoken to some of the, to some of the operators, and, and salary is a big deal. I, I think, I think it's a big, it's a big problem amongst our operators. But maybe talking to them, I know that we've, that we've done other stuff. I know when I toured last year, they had a room where they could go in and relax and listen, you know, and meditate for five minutes after being on a very stressful shift. So I appreciate that, but, but there has to be more that we should be able to do. And we should be talking, like I said, to the other bigger cities than us to see what is it that, that we're doing and then talking to our own workers. And, and I do believe that salaries, I'm, I'm sure also plays a huge part into that.
Yes, Mr. Chair, members of the Subcommittee, we did talk with our police and fire and aviation dispatchers as part of the workgroup. We actually had dispatchers participate, as well as dispatch supervisors participate in that workgroup, which was extremely helpful, and they were the impetus for many of the recommendations that were made, which did include the quiet rooms and other things that, that I didn't talk about today, training on the somatic response and how to deal with traumatic situations. Those types of things are also included in the recommendations. And many of those things did come from the staff who work in these positions. So you're absolutely right, Councilwoman, that these staff know the jobs best and they know how to improve the workgroup, as well as the environment to bring new qualified staff into. And so we have been utilizing their expertise. But we would be happy to look into what other large cities are doing as well and to bring that information back to the Subcommittee.
Great. Now, thank you for that. And then if, if I can, if maybe we can talk offline or if you can get me what are, what were some of those recommendations that the dispatchers made, just to see how is it that we can, you know, talk to Ed and try to figure out how we can accelerate this, just because, you know, from what we're hearing from constituents, constituents are on hold for over 30 minutes. You know, like people are getting discouraged to calling in when they see incidents happening in, in the city. So we don't want to discourage people from calling in, like we want to make sure that they continue to call in misbehavior. And then at the same time, we want to make sure that we can also provide something better for our dispatchers. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Is there anybody else? Any comments? Lori, I have a comment. So you mentioned the salaries of, of the different cities throughout Maricopa County, and I also seen that we were like the top four. Now, was this just the salaries or was this their compensations also in the package?
Mr. Chair, this was looking at base salary.
And if you threw in the compensation, where would we stand? Or did you, did you actually do those types of comparisons?
Mr. Chair, we did not do a total compensation comparison for this particular review. One of the reasons for that is because we had a limited amount of time and so we needed to get it together pretty quickly. However, we, we can do that. We are actually getting ready to embark on some work across the city, looking at our, our classification structure, and then ultimately to do some market comparisons on those things, which would include total compensation. However, in this particular case, we are looking at base salary only. I would imagine many of the cities offer similar benefits to what we offer, with the one exception perhaps of the deferred compensation benefits that we offer for some of our employees. But we, we would likely compare as it relates to the healthcare benefits that we offer, tuition reimbursement, and some of those sorts of things, because many jurisdictions do offer some of those same benefits. Or many of those benefits.
Thank you. Do we have any calls on this item? Corey?
Chairman, we do have two callers. They are on the line. The first is Jeff Spellman.
All righty.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the City Council. Jeff Spellman with the Violence Impact Project Coalition. I live in District Five. I'm, I'm calling and I've been talking with my councilwoman about very excessive call times, hold times, when for many, many years, being involved with Block Watch and neighborhood advocacy, neighbors have been encouraged to call and report suspicious activity. But when you routinely are on hold for a crime stop for 10 minutes or more, I've experienced hold times of more than 30 minutes. This is very, very frustrating to people that are trying to be engaged in neighborhood advocacy and Block Watch. Information I think that needs to be obtained is the numbers of abandoned calls, because I think this adds to the stress. When people call crime stop and they hang up, sometimes they call 911, and that just ramps up the stressfulness and the additional number of calls at a higher level that then have to be triaged before they're dealt with. So this is all adding, I think, to the high vacancy rate. Obviously, 20, almost 25% vacancy rate in these positions is adding to the excessive workload of these positions. I think it does boil down to an issue of recruitment and retention. That's something I've talked with my councilwoman about. I appreciate the information that's coming from the workgroup, but clearly what you can see is Phoenix has the lowest starting salary of all the agencies. I think this is contributing to the high vacancy, the high volumes. This is contributing to officer safety. When dispatchers are trying to hurry callers off the line, they're not getting all of the information that they should that would be relayed to police officers. And then on top of that, when you are running, you know, such a high call volume and calls holding, that they're patching frequencies together. And so that adds additional stress.
Thank you so much for your comments. Do we have anyone else?
The next speaker is Shirley Deekman.
Hello. Hi. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I'm, I'm in District Four, and I'm going to speak from past experience when I worked in a large hospital and we needed nurses. And we went first to the nurses, which I appreciate the fact that you did go to the operators first and ask what they felt. But I know that recruitment, when the starting salary, if you go on any of the social media services, starting salary is $31,000 or $15 an hour in Phoenix. One of the, the same thing was true with our RNs. We needed more RNs. So the first thing we did was we increased their hourly wage. But one of the biggest things that people talked about and our staff wanted was a rapid salary increase or change. In the City of Phoenix, 10% of the salary change is in five years. If we could just even change that 10% salary change to three years, that way a new recruit would know, hey, I'm going to get, doing this stressful job, I am going to get a salary increase at least in the next three years, not five years out. The other thing is, is a work schedule. You need to have people in place that put work schedules that make them adjustable to their families. I looked, it's almost a year, they have to plan their vacations within a year. I made the schedule out for 45 people and I know how important schedules are to them. And that's the other thing that helps with retention, is recruitment is the salary and the raise, but retention is knowing that I have some control over my work schedule. What a super stressful job. ICU nursing in the burn unit, they, they have the same kind of turnover, and what they would do is plan in advance to move them into something, and I really think that's important.
Thank you. Corey, any other calls?
Chairman, that was the last caller for that item.
Was that any closing remarks for my colleagues? Well, Lori, thank, Councilmember Carlos?
Thank you. Yeah, no, I just.
Um, yeah, no, I just, I, I really appreciate that we're looking into this. I, I think the work that these folks are doing is, is really difficult. Um, I also think it's important for us to look at the facilities. I know we've been thinking about bettering the facilities and figuring out. Um, but I think along with pay, and I do think we need to be competitive and, and increase the pay for, for this work that's so difficult, we also need to make sure that the work environment, um, is, it goes along with it. And so I, I think we're, we're making some attempts on making that better. But I, I hope that we also look at that as, um, as supporting these folks that, that are doing the work. So, thank you all for doing the study.
Thank you, council member. Council member, um, Betty?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Um, so Laurie, to, to what that, um, the last caller, um, what she said, um, changing, um, the increase in salary from five years to three years, um, how, i- is that something that we could realistically do? Like, what would we have to do to change that?
Mr. Chair members of the subcommittee, Councilwoman Wardaro. We do have an increase in salary each year for our, our dispatchers because we utilize the step system. So, um, if a dispatcher comes in at step one, within six months, they will move to step two. And then within a year after that, they move to step three and then step four each year, provided they have a successful performance review. So our step system does progress people fairly quickly through the salary range up to the top step. Um, that is something that is unique to the city of Phoenix and is not common in many of the municipalities. So, um, in, in that respect, we are actually doing, uh, fairly well in how we move individuals through the range. As I mentioned, one of the things that we're also working toward is establishing, um, criteria for new hires to come into the range at higher than step one if they have qualifications, um, that merit them doing so, uh, which will also, uh, assist us in recruiting more highly qualified, um, candidates with skillsets that we desire. So that is something that, um, that is actively underway and is something that, that is possible for us to do with our existing system. So the only thing that we, uh, would require additional approvals to do would be to actually make changes to the salary range itself or to make adjustments to current salaries of, um, existing staff members. Uh, but, but as far as moving people through the range, there's not anything different that we would need to do because that already happens.
Great, okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I'd also like to, um, respond to Councilmember Garcia's, um, comment about the work environment. That is something that the work group did address and made recommendations on. Um, there are some of those things like the quiet room, lighting, um, additional ways for, um, dispatchers to have access to, you know, be able to move in their chairs, different types of, of ergonomic equipment. Those types of things, um, are things that we have begun to implement and are implementing as part of the work group recommendations as well. And I would be happy to share the entire report from the work group with the subcommittee members.
Thank you so much, Laurie, for the report. And thank you, um, council member Betty for bringing this onto the agenda. Our next item is item number five, Community Policy Review Panel. It's a pilot. Chief, it's all yours.
Thank you, sir. Chairman, members of the subcommittee, um, I'm bringing forth an agenda item for information discussion related to the Community Policy Review Panel Pilot. First, let me give you a quick overview of the process with which policy is, uh, re- reviewed and then eventually consummated within the Phoenix Police Department. Um, so what, the, the policy unit within the Professional Standards Bureau is currently the bear and, and the responsible party for this, uh, process that we currently have. Um, what happens is, um, for a litany of different reasons, um, policy can be changed, added, or modified. Um, and then it is routed internally during a fourteen-day review period and comment period, uh, to the entire organization. Post that fourteen-day review period, um, if there are changes that are needed to be identified, whether it's legal or, or training or anything, um, those changes are, are made. And eventually, um, the police chief signs off on the operations order and it's, and it's implemented. The goal of this pilot panel, uh, is to ensure that we continue to engage a broad range of community members in what we believe is one of the most important things we do, and that's policy and operations orders. Um, there are hundreds of revisions that are proposed annually for a whole host of reasons. Um, and so, uh, we initiated this pilot in December of twenty-twenty. The panel formalizes a process. Um, we think this formalization of it is really important, um, currently that, that, that it doesn't have. Let me, let me speak to you to the panel composition. Um, so currently there are seventeen local representatives, um, twelve police chief advisory board members. And, and with the advisory boards, we've designated, uh, one person within the board. And then we are, the expectation of the relationship is that those twelve lean into the relationship capital they have within the community and, and seek, uh, broader input. Um, we have a business community member, um, from the Blue Business Council. Healthcare community is representative from Vaya de Sol. Um, the reentry community, um, we think this is a really important part of a safe community is engaging the reentry community through Arizona Common Ground. We have youth advocacy input, um, and then additional advocacy organizations such as the Maricopa County Branch of the N double A C P. So the process, um, eh, the process will mirror, uh, what is currently done in that fourteen-day, uh, period. With the pilot, we didn't want to overcomplicate it. So, um, within that fourteen-day period, um, we have set up a, uh, email communication system out of the policy unit and P S B in partnership with the Community Engagement Bureau. And then those policy drafts are, are sent out, um, to the community members. They have the same fourteen-day, uh, period to be able to provide feedback. Um, once that feedback is, is gleaned and brought in, it is further discussed. And then at the end of, uh, the process, the final policy approval, uh, is Police Chief Williams. Um, we think it's important to circle back, uh, to, to demonstrate value and commitment. And what we do is we circle back with those panel members and explain to them, um, how the policy has been finalized. Panel members, um, can provide, uh, input on a whole host of topics. So we believe this process has set up an additional path for community to engage. Community members now, through our websites, uh, have access to all our outward-facing policies and procedures. And if they ever want to engage proactively or bring up a change that they would like us to implement, that they think's in the best interest of the department and the community, um, that, that is still in play. Um, we will evaluate, um, this pilot program every six months. Um, I think pilots are really healthy from a perspective of learning. Um, I, I think this pilot has the potential, um, to, to generate ideas and, and learning moments for whatever systems are in place in the future related to, to community engagement and community transparency. So with that being said, um, if there are any questions, I'm happy to take them.
Any questions for my colleagues? Uh, council member, um, Carlos?
Thank you. Um, thank you for, for this update. I had a couple of questions. Who was part of the Community Policy Review Panel, um, in, in the December convening?
Chairman Noakowski and members of the subcommittee, Councilman Garcia. I'm sorry, I, I, you cut off, I couldn't hear your last part of the question.
So you, you had a convening in, in December, right, last month? Who was part of it to kind of come up with this?
Chairman Noakowski, members of the subcommittee and, uh, Councilman Garcia. Um, this panel that was put forth that I read, that had the twelve representatives from the advisory boards, uh, and the business community and the health community, um, th- they were utilized in this process.
Okay, and who's, who's, again, similar questions to last time. Who's making the decisions on which community members can be involved in this process? Who's selecting the folks?
Chairman Noakowski, members of the subcommittee and Councilman Garcia. In this process, process, Chief Williams, um, was eventually, uh, the, the final say on who was involved in this panel. Um, we believe that through the twelve advisory boards and those other, other entities that I listed, um, that we provided her with a, a broad range of, of diversity from the community.
Okay, and so, you speak of that diversity, what's, what's the ki- criteria being used, uh, to select which community members, organizations will be invited to participate?
Well, Chairman Noakowski, members of the subcommittee and Councilman Garcia, as I spoke to earlier, I just want to make sure we're clear, um, anybody, anytime can provide us input, um, whether it, whether it's, uh, some of the organizations that, that we have conflict with at times. Um, we are open and, and, and we have, uh, you know, Aubrey Gonzalez engages in a lot of community engagement and so we're open for that input. Um, and so within this current, uh, group, um, this, this was brought together through members of the Community Engagement Bureau, based on pra- past practices, where these members have held, held us accountable, have provided us with constructive criticism, um, and have engaged collaboratively with building, um, systems and/or policy in the past. And so this group that you see in this current panel, um, eh, has a history of working collaboratively with this police department in the city while holding us accountable and being constructive in their criticism.
Yeah, no, I mean, I, I applaud you all for, for moving forward and, and doing this. I think it's important to have community input. I think my, my concern still, obviously they're being selected by the department, i- it's fine. But even hearing that the last caller was part of your hiring review board and there's obvious bias there, I, I would prefer to see criteria and what you're looking, um, to when you're creating these boards. Um, and I would hope that it's not like, like the caller who was there earlier, who's obviously biased or, or has an opinion, that, that the criteria is actually, um, with folks that, that aren't already connected to the police department, that maybe even some... To me, the, the way I've been thinking about how we're coming up with, with some of this, the, some of the reform, the best way that I've been able to understand the process is folks that have gone through incidents with the police department. And so I, I would really suggest or appreciate if, if folks that I would consider are family members that have been victims of policies that, that were inadequate from the department, that were aiming to change, if those folks can also be involved. And, and that's more of a comment than, than a question, but, but thank you for sharing today.
Thank you, sir.
Any other comments from my colleague? Do we have any, um, cards on this?
Chairman, we do have two individuals on the line. The first is A.J. Marsden.
Hello, Public Safety and Justice Subcommittee and listeners. I'm A.J. Marsden. I want to thank the police department for their outreach and transparency, including the two new boards. Even during COVID, uh, there's been many calls, emails and video chats with our C A Os, sergeants, lieutenants, commanders and chiefs. Information and ideas are being shared. Neighborhood issues are being worked on. Please partner with our police. Society is changing, so is policing. I see this in my teaching career. Diversity, creativity and understanding are necessary for finding community solutions. Following best practices is important for a safe city. Community policing takes community involvement before a critical incident happens. Please partner with our police. Oversight and reform of policing are being clamored for. But oversight of our police without insight into policing is dangerous for the police and dangerous for our city of Phoenix. Please take the time to understand policing. Now, here's a policy gone wrong story from California. A new prison policy was not to wake prisoners during overnight security rounds. Six dangerous criminals escaped due to this new policy by using ropes made from their sheets. Now, how many of you have faked being in bed by stuffing clothes in your bed? No need to answer that. I'll end by saying thank you to the police department for being amazing twenty-four-seven, three hundred sixty-five days a year. And I look forward to our continued and valuable police partnership. Thank you.
Thank you, and is there another card?
The next caller is Nadine Aloria.
Hello. Yes, thank you, everyone, for, um, hearing me speak and put some input in today. Uh, first of all, I am, um, very honored to be a member of the Community Hiring Review Board and to even be asked and, you know, meet, um, meet the qualifications. I'm a Phoenix native and a proud Phoenix native and, um, also of Hispanic heritage. Um, I'm a business owner and my family has owned businesses in Phoenix for fifty-five years. We are very, um, aware of the challenges in hiring in general, even just for a, a regular business, let alone hiring, um, an individual of the stature for, um, our police department. Um, there, that's a much taller order than, um, you know, administration or, or something. There are many more requirements. Um, after fifty-five years in family business, we're, we're just very aware of the fact that we can only hire those people that apply. And, um, unfortunately, no, not everybody, uh, applies for the positions we have available in our own businesses that we would like. You know, they're not all qualified. Um, some of them are, you know, on drugs or, you know, have other issues that we don't want in our business and those all apply to the police department as well, obviously. Um, just in the orientation that, um, I got to do in the Community Hiring Review Board, um, I learned so much and it was, it was a huge eye-opener, um, just for all of the, uh, understanding the re- requirements to even be qualified, um, to be, um, considered as, uh, as a police officer. Um, so I just want to, again, express my, um, gratitude for our Phoenix P D. And again, thank you for allowing me to be part of this process at all. And, um, it's an honor. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Corey, any other cards?
That was our last speaker on that item.
All righty, so, um, any other closing comments for my councilmembers? With that, thank you so much, Chief. And I think that's the last item that y'all have. Since, now we have fire up, basically inspecting and testing and maintenance over, uh, reporting systems for fire.
Good morning, Chairman Noakowski and members of the subcommittee. As you know, I'm Executive Assistant Fire Chief Scott Walker. Joining me today is Division Chief Jill Meyer and our Assistant Fire Marshal Eric Williams. We're here today to provide the subcommittee with an update on really what I'd say the successes of the Breiser Compliance Engine Program that we put in place about a year ago. As a reminder, this is the program that is an innovative, technology-based solution that allows us to manage the requirement that all life safety systems here within the city of Phoenix are tested. This is extremely important in keeping our community safe. So at this time, I am going to turn the presentation over to Chief Meyer. Chief Meyer manages our fire prevention efforts here in the city of Phoenix and he can provide you with the details on really the program and the successes. Chief Meyer?
Good morning, Chairman Noakowski and members of the subcommittee. Um, we're very excited to be here today to speak on the success that the Breiser program has brought to the fire department as well as fire prevention. In a brief overview of some of fire prevention's responsibilities, we are one of the main three components of the modern fire service. The other two involve public education as well as emergency response. One of the com- uh, major components that we utilize in order to be able to proactively protect our community is annual testing, inspection and maintenance requirements, um, for buildings in our community. The fire code requires that we utilize third-party contractors, um, to provide for these inspections. Sorry, I'll catch up here. Unfortunately, historically, this has been a challenge, uh, to manage. Currently, the city of Phoenix has over thirty-six thousand commercial structures. Within those thirty-six thousand commercial structures, there's ninety-seven thousand life safety systems that require inspections. Prior to the Breiser program, we didn't have a mechanism to ensure participation from third-party contractors. And because of that, we had poor compliance. A year ago at this time, we had twenty-three, um, contractors were submitting reports to us. We were receiving approximately three thousand reports annually. These reports came in via mail. These reports came in via mail, email, some were dropped off in person. As you can see in the picture, it was an awful lot of paperwork. These were 20 to 30-page detailed reports. It was very labor-intensive for our staff to have to go through these. It would take, on average, 45 minutes before they could even be assigned to our inspectors. If this program isn't managed correctly, it creates risk for the community as well as the city of Phoenix. In January of 2020, fire prevention implemented the Breiser program. We immediately saw an increase in reporting. The 23 private contractors, third-party private contractors, is now at 135. That's over 1,000% increase. And the 3,000 reports we were getting is now nearly 17,000. That's a 471% increase. And these are dramatic simply because we're in the middle of a global pandemic right now. The reports that used to take 45 minutes, on average, for our staff to process, has now been dropped to six minutes. It's extremely efficient, not only for fire prevention in our staff, but it's allowed our customers now to only have to deal with one fire inspector and with fire prevention, instead of having to navigate through multiple city departments and the possibility of having multiple inspectors working on their project. The best part of all this is this has come at nearly no cost to the city of Phoenix and minimal cost to our customers. Currently, the city of Phoenix gets $15 per report that's submitted, and the Breiser company gets $15. So to summarize, we are proactively protecting our residents and firefighters now using IT-based innovative technology. Instead of having paper reports in filing cabinets, we now have a database that we can utilize to gather information reports and provide reports for our senior staff as well as for city leadership. We've been able to maximize our staff and resources. We also now have the ability to have real-time premise profiles. This is important for us in prevention, where we can know who the owners of the buildings are, as well as the responsible parties, and then our operations divisions on fire trucks can utilize that information to contact owners after hours if there's an emergency at their property. And again, this has been at no cost to the city and minimal cost to our customers. Very pleased to tell you today that we are by far, thanks to this Subcommittee's support as well as the full council's vote, in November of 2019, the city of Phoenix is now a safer place. Thank you for your time. This concludes our report. We'd be welcome to answer any questions you may have at this time.
Any questions for my colleagues? Seeing none, thank you so much for your report. And now, we're on item number seven. We're talking about an update on the cigarettes and vaping for under 21.
Mr. Chairman Spencer Self, Director of our Neighborhood Services Department, and Julie Cre, the Assistant City Attorney, will be making this presentation.
Thank you, Assistant Manager.
Good morning, Chairman Noakowski and members of the Subcommittee. Thank you. At the October Subcommittee, a request was made to conduct community meetings to obtain input about e-cigarette and vaping use, especially among teens, and especially in regards to flavored products, and actions the community and the city can take to address those concerns. This presentation summarizes our efforts related to that request. The Neighborhood Services Department hosted three community listening sessions on the topic of e-cigarettes and vaping for participants residing or doing business in South, Central, and North Phoenix. Meeting invitations were sent to leaders from neighborhood organizations listed with the Neighborhood Services Department, Village Planning Committee members, school superintendents, and citizens that spoke at the October 2020 City Council Public Safety and Justice Subcommittee. And I believe some of those folks are probably on the line right now, waiting to speak today as well. We also included some individuals that were provided by some of our committee members. While participants were encouraged to attend the session designated for their area of Phoenix, many participated in all three listening sessions, and some provided testimonials and information through email. The purpose of the sessions was to gather feedback to provide to you on the issues related to e-cigarettes and vaping, including any concerns related to retailers offering vaping products particularly flavored to youth, and any actions the community and city could take to address those concerns. Many attendees on one side of the issue were small business owners who sell tobacco vape cigar products, tobacco and vape users, and advocates for the tobacco industry. On the other side of the issue, we had coalitions active in advocacy around health and/or anti-tobacco concerned residents and school district representatives. There was a desire to work to identify better solutions to reduce youth use of vaping tobacco products. However, recommended solutions varied. In total, there were 97 unique speakers, 237 registrants, and we also received nine emails. We heard a wide range of feedback with some common concerns, including the impact of vaping on youth, including ease of access, including dense retailer locations in minority and low-income neighborhoods, lure of tobacco-flavored products, which often got youth involved and hooked, and then the addiction-forming habits that would result in ongoing use, perhaps because of flavored products. The general health impacts of vaping tobacco products, including health impacts on respiratory systems, so just for the general population, especially during the COVID-19 pandemic, health impacts related to cancer, counterarguments that related to evidence that vaping helps smokers stop smoking combustible tobacco products as well. We also heard concerns regarding a lack of enforcement of existing laws on sales. While there are federal laws that make selling tobacco products to minors illegal, the enforcement is insufficient, as well as some results of enforcement showing products are being sold to minors despite those existing laws. And on the other side, we also received a variety of concerns related to potential new regulation, including additional regulation resulting in retailers losing revenue, which could put some family-owned businesses out of business, decrease tax revenue, and perhaps drive sales to other cities. New regulations against individual use, concerns that it would disproportionately impact people of color, that access would be reduced for adults, even though use in youth may be the target of those regulations. A flavor ban could impact tobacco product categories that do not appeal to youth, such as flavored cigars, and the fact that it could relate or result in unregulated black markets for tobacco products. However, the community did not just explain their concerns, they also provided recommended solutions that could help address those concerns, such as implementing new city regulations, such as a ban on tobacco products altogether, or a ban on flavored tobacco products, or limiting sales to specialty shops. Supporting new state regulation, such as prohibiting sales to youth and a licensing program. Providing additional enforcement and/or penalties for retailers who are selling to youth, or for adults who buy products for youth. Providing more education for both youth and parents. And there were also a variety of proposed actions to really not support any kind of additional regulation, either at the city level, or perhaps at the state level, or that would impact sales or adult access. With that, I will now turn the presentation over to Julie to provide a reminder of current laws and options for the Subcommittee.
Thank you, Spencer. So, again, we are going to first summarize the current law. Federal law prohibits sales of all tobacco products, including e-cigarettes and e-liquids, to those under 21, and that is enforced by the Federal Drug Administration. For state law, it is prohibited for the sale and use of tobacco products and vapor products to 18 and under, and is enforced by the Arizona Department of Health Services and the Arizona Attorney General's Office. So state law also addresses where smoking is allowed, but not vaping currently. Many other cities in the last year have addressed prohibition of vaping, and also implemented city or town codes to prohibit the sale to under 21. So, options that the council has are, first, council could ask staff to go back and draft city code ordinance to prohibit retail sales and/or the use of tobacco and vapor products that apply to under 21. Secondly, they could ask staff to look at a city code ordinance prohibiting sale or use of any flavored tobacco products. Third, you could ask staff to work with the industry on education efforts. And fourth, we could continue to work with the state on proposed legislation. Now, obviously, you could take any or none of these, these are just some proposed actions. And with that, Chairman, we would take any questions.
Any questions for my colleagues, or do you want us to listen to the cards first?
I have a question for Judy.
Right, Councilmember Betty?
Thank you. Judy, so my question is, so what you're saying is that we're not in compliance with federal law when it comes to not being able to be at the age of 21, to be able to vape and smoke?
Chairman and Councilmember, so right now, there is a gap in what the federal law was enacted as of January of last year, and the state legislation basically catching up with that. The federal law would still govern and supersede over any state laws for that. So retailers are still required to be in compliance with federal law and only sell to 21 and under.
So what action do we need to take to make sure that we're doing the right thing with the federal law?
Chairman and Councilmember, the city isn't required to take any action currently. The retailers are already under federal and state law that they are required to do that. The benefit, so to speak, of enacting a city code would be to look at city enforcement, excuse me, to look at city enforcement measures, and also, the city could consider a city code as having stricter fines or other enforcement tools for the city to enforce it.
And what does the city code say? Does the city code say 18, 21, or does it not have an age attached to it?
Chairman and Councilmember, currently, we do not have a provision in our city code addressing specifically this issue.
And not a specific age?
Correct.
Got it, okay, thank you.
Any other questions or concerns before we listen to the cards?
Yeah, I just had a question, I'm sorry, for Spencer. Is he still there?
Yes.
Okay, great. So when you said the community outreach, the community outreach that you did was South Phoenix, Central Phoenix, and North Phoenix?
Yes.
So, and that outreach, is there a reason why the West Side wasn't included in that?
Mr. Chair and Councilwoman, we were looking to have several meetings to help try to kind of get some geographical separation across the city. However, we also didn't have a lot of time in order to be able to prepare and provide this information for you today. And so, the West was included, however, it was broken up into those North, Central, and South. We largely broke those areas up by the village planning committees to help guide that.
So did we work then with the Maryvale Village or Alhambra?
We did send invitations to all village planning committee members, yes.
And was there any participation from those villages?
I don't have the full list with me. I didn't pull out specific members to show that representation. But what I will say is largely, we were trying to break it up so that we could provide you perhaps some different metrics based on what we heard from those different areas. In a typical year, when we are not experiencing COVID, these would have been in person, and so we would have picked geographical locations across the city. However, due to that limitation, they were all online, and while we could send specific area-based invites for the neighborhood associations and the village planning committee members, what we couldn't do is for any of the other groups that we mentioned. So, we didn't, we weren't necessarily successful in breaking folks up by the different areas within the city of Phoenix. And that, the numbers bear that out. In particular, the last meeting, which was designated for North Phoenix, ended up being the one that we had the most participation, about double any of the other nights. But again, a lot of the folks who were on that call had been represented the two nights prior, and so we really didn't, we were not able to parse out the information based on area as we intended.
Got it, okay, thank you.
Any other questions for my colleagues before we go to the cards? All right, let's go to the cards.
Okay, Chairman, we have 61 individuals who's requesting to speak on this item. The first individual we'll go to is Nate Kohler. He is not on the line. Ronnie Swice?
Hello?
Yes.
Good morning, everybody. Thank you for having me. I just want to say, you know, we've mentioned a lot of these points, you know, before with the earlier sessions, but if we're just only doing Phoenix ban, it's really not going to be effective. If there is anything that's going to work, it's going to have to be statewide. And I don't see a reason why the cities can't collaborate together the same way when the governor did not do anything about, you know, the lockdowns or the masks. The cities took the initiative to just go ahead and work together on that. And the ban, you know, as it stands right now, is just including too many different categories under one umbrella, while your purpose is attacking the underage vaping, but you're punishing all the other categories and all the other businesses involved that sell all these other products. And then, you know, the enforcement is a whole, you know, big problem too. Currently, the city's enforcement is police. You're throwing more under play to deal with, and there has already been a lot of issues, you know, with that, you know, calls for defunding, calls for reform, and, you know, it's already shorthanded, you know, as is on police officers. They can't keep up. And honestly, it's becoming a problem. It's an epidemic of just taking a handful of bad examples and targeting the whole industry or whole section, you know? All cops are bad because of a few bad ones. All blacks are criminals because of a few bad ones. All politicians are corrupt because of a few bad ones. All protesters are rioters because of a few bad ones. Not all retailers are selling to minors, you know? There's a handful that are being, you know, magnified into the face of the whole industry. So, a solution would be...
Okay, the next caller is Nida Koshaba.
Sorry, I had you on mute. My name is Nada Koshaba. My husband Albert and I have operated a family-owned business, a smoke shop, for the past almost 16 years. Our business has helped support our family with our two sons, one in college and the other one on his way this coming May. I am speaking out today to address the possibility of banning flavored tobacco and how it all will affect our business. The loss of income will severely hurt our ability to educate our children. My husband and I believe that tobacco use is an adult decision, so we always carefully ID our customers to keep out of kids' hands. Retailers are the first line of defense. When it comes to preventing the kids from purchasing tobacco products, we take this responsibility very seriously. We feel individuals should have the liberty to decide their own futures as to not to be forced to supply their needs from the black market. Let's not force the people to break the law. This is why the city council should not pass this... This is why the city council should not pass this ordinance and instead allow responsible retailers to continue to sell products in a law-abiding manner rather than creating an unregulated marketplace. Reasonable regulations to keep tobacco products from getting into kids' hands make sense, but banning the sale of menthol cigarettes, flavored cigars, and flavored dip to adults is not the right way. It would only create unintended consequences and severely hurt responsible retailers like us. Our fear is that our loyal customers will be forced to take their business and one mile down Glendale, surrounding areas, other businesses like Chimney Days, Smoke and Vape Shop, and many others. Not only will this affect our business, but also our neighboring businesses where we depend on each other. This will also have a great.
Okay, our next caller is Dixon Benjamin. He's not on. Tata Maitai? Thomas Bryant?
Good morning. My name is Tom Bryant, and I am the Executive Director for the National Association of Tobacco Outlets, a trade association of retailers with member stores in Phoenix. Retailers are not the source of electronic cigarette and vaping products for the vast majority of underage youth, especially those who are under eighteen. In fact, according to the Food and Drug Administration, most youth rely on social sources, which includes older friends, siblings, parents, and even giving money to strangers to obtain vaping products. Most importantly, according to news surveys, the crisis of youth vaping has peaked and is now declining. In addition, in February of this year, the Food and Drug Administration banned the sale of many flavored electronic cigarettes that youth were using. Other actions the city should take into account to accelerate the decline in underage vaping use include the following: allow the federal legal age law that raised the legal age to purchase tobacco to twenty-one to continue to work, as that law has been effective for just over one year. Also, a federal bill was just signed into law by the president last month called the Vapor Pact Act that placed new restrictions on internet sales to prevent underage purchases of vaping products through websites. Since this issue arose because of concern that underage youth were using vaping products, there is no justification to significantly broaden the scope of any ordinance to include a ban on the sale of menthol cigarettes, flavored smokeless products, flavored cigars, and pipe tobacco. To do so would constitute government overreach and only cause legal age adults to drive just outside the city of Phoenix to patronize retailers with self-flavored tobacco products. Local Phoenix retailers would thus lose sales and be financially impacted. Thank you for your time and consideration.
The next caller is Huzsa Ahmed. Bob Roberts?
Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. For fifteen years, I've owned a tobacco shop in District One. We sell various tobacco and vape items to adults over twenty-one. I want to say first that the FDA inspection results show that ninety-seven percent of Phoenix retailers inspected are not selling to underage customers. Retailers are neither the problem nor the source of youth using tobacco. Retailers that sell to minors should be severely penalized. Banning retailers from selling a product is easy, and everyone feels like something was done. We all want to do something to fix this problem. But if retailers are not the problem, the real challenge to policymakers and proponents is effective youth education and disincentives to use tobacco. I want to speak briefly about the matter of illicit and black market selling, which was mentioned in the report at the beginning of the agenda. I can attest from fifteen years at our location that a black market thrives and is currently growing over the years as cigarette and vape prices have increased. Currently, the main catalyst to black market is cheaper prices. If an entire category of products such as vape and flavored are banned, a much larger market will open up, changing the catalyst from pricing advantages to replacement and thus greatly increasing the profit for the seller and incentives for the buyer to purchase. Illlicit markets are very real, and black market sellers will readily move into the market that offers the opportunity to make money selling legal tobacco products that are banned by a local government. Most black marketers we see now are individuals. However, as has been experienced in other large cities, with the profit and buyer potential increasing, gangs could possibly organize crime and terrorism funding move into these markets. They don't check ID use, and they don't.
Okay, the next caller is Brett Paggy.
Are we connected? Are we connected?
Yes.
Thank you for taking the time to hear concerns related to the flavor ban reviewed by the Phoenix City Council. My name is Brett Kegy, a native Phoenician with thirty-nine years in business and business consulting in Phoenix in the western United States. I oppose citywide bans on consumer products. From my experience, city bans do not achieve their objective as we see neighboring cities pick up business not only in the banned products, but the entire consumer market basket. That includes grocery, fuel, food services, and entertainment dollars. This will affect total retail sales in both chains and mom-and-pop stores by as much as twenty-six percent, which neighboring cities welcome the added business and tax revenue. This not only affects loss in sales and livelihood for businesses, it also correlates to community employment, services, local support programs, and charities. The answer to your concerns is continued strong enforcement of federal and state laws related to the sale and purchase of tobacco, vapor, and e-cigarettes, and coming soon, marijuana, thanks to Proposition 107 by Arizona voters. Marijuana sales is a much bigger issue, as it is not federally legal nor overseen by the FDA. It should be noted that Maricopa County has a high rating in the enforcement of alcohol and tobacco activities. All Arizona businesses are continually tested by enforcement agencies and are not willing to be fined or possibly lose their license by not following guidelines in the sale of these adult products. Closed doors and struggling businesses in the city of Phoenix is not the answer. Continued enforcement of current laws, including federal age twenty-one, benefit businesses, their communities, and our city. Thank you again for the time to express my concerns on this critical subject to businesses operating in Phoenix.
The next caller is Charles Gardner.
I'm up. Mr. Chairman, members of the subcommittee, my name is Charles Gardner. I have a PhD in neurobiology from the University of Michigan. I do not work for any tobacco or vape company. I have worked on the Hill for the US Congress, served as a diplomat in India, and as a senior advisor to the World Health Organization, and directed global health programs at the Rockefeller Foundation. My remarks will focus on flavor bans. I will follow up to the subcommittee with my four remarks. All my statements are based on US government survey data and peer-reviewed research. Smoking kills four hundred and eighty thousand Americans every year. I'm guessing everyone who's listening has lost a loved one to smoking. E-cigarettes are far safer than smoking, and they help smokers quit. They have helped four point three million American smokers quit so far. US teen vaping is not epidemic. US high school vaping dropped twenty-nine percent in twenty nineteen and dropped another thirty-two percent in twenty twenty during the pandemic. That's a total decline of fifty-two percent in just two years. It looks more like a fad than a crisis. And only four percent of US high school kids vape daily, and I would say only some of those may be hooked. Flavor bans have significant unintended and highly undesirable consequences. Cigarette sales increase, and this has happened in San Francisco, in Washington, Rhode Island, and Nova Scotia. Teens may switch to smoking. Teens may switch to THC vaping. Adult vapers will relapse to smoking, and there's good data on that, and fewer smokers will quit. And finally, a bootleg market will arise, which is less safe, and by the way, has no age checks. Thank you.
Our next caller is David Morris.
Mr. Chairman, members of the subcommittee, thank you for your time. Like like you said, my name is David Morris. I'm a proud lifelong resident of Phoenix, but today I'm here in my capacity as the president of the Arizona Smoke Free Business Alliance to share some information we gathered about preventing youth from becoming addicted to nicotine. In the three previous listening sessions, I spoke at length about why banning flavored vaping products in other cities has not resulted in a decrease in youth usage and creates black markets, unsafe products, and a mass migration of adults back to deadly cigarettes. Today, I'd like to talk about solutions that actually work, as we've seen from other municipalities that have done so previously, namely, increasing the age, the legal age to purchase from eighteen to twenty-one, commonly referred to as Tobacco Twenty-One. Raising the age to purchase from eighteen to twenty-one at the federal level in the final days of twenty nineteen led to a dramatic decrease of over thirty percent in youth usage in twenty twenty. Why is this so effective? Well, it's because most high school seniors turn eighteen while they're still in school. The social circles of these new adults are still made up primarily of minors under the age of eighteen. However, twenty-one-year-olds in their junior or senior year of college are far less likely to socialize with a fifteen-year-old than a high school student is to socialize with his classmates. With the FDA's National Youth Tobacco Survey showing that the overwhelming majority of minors gain access to tobacco and vaping products through what they call social sources, shutting down this on round to nicotine addiction is by far the most effective method. I'd also like to point out that the state law is still currently eighteen years old, and when the Attorney General does things, they check for eighteen and not for twenty-one. So I urge the council to benefit from the experience of our neighboring cities and states and raise the age to purchase from eighteen to twenty-one while allowing flavored vapor products to stay available to the adult smokers who depend on them. Thank you for your time.
The next caller is Amanda Gray.
Hello?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman and members of the subcommittee, thank you for the opportunity to speak this morning. My name is Amanda Gray. I'm the Executive Director of the Arizona Petroleum Marketers Association. I'm also a resident in District Three. APMA represents fuel and convenience retailers around the city and across the state. First of all, I want to extend our thanks to the city staff for their work in running the listening sessions last month. Secondly, I want the record to reflect that we are opposed to a ban on flavored tobacco and vapor products in the city. APMA members are responsible retailers of tobacco and vapor products. We agree that these products do not belong in the hands of youth. In addition to the federal government action to raise the age of purchase to twenty-one last year, the FDA has also taken action to reduce vapor flavors for cartridge-based products like Juul. We've seen in city flavor bans carried out in other states that consumers will simply go to another city to purchase their product of choice. That would mean that Phoenix retailers are going to lose out, not just on the tobacco sale, but also other purchases at the same time, like fuel, snacks, and drinks. We think that there should be a statewide solution to the challenges of youth vaping. We support state-level licensing for tobacco retailers and a statewide age of purchase aligned with the federal twenty-one requirement. So we would ask that the city work with the folks who are aimed at getting this problem solved in a comprehensive manner at the state legislature. Thank you for your time.
The next caller is Siddhar Maduri. Christopher Ortega.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, thank you, Council. My name is Christopher Ortega with Neighborhood Ford. We're here to speak about the unintended consequences of such a ban on flavored tobacco on a minority community. We understand small mom-and-pop shops, businesses will be affected at a commerce level, but it is the community that is using these. And when I say community, adults using these products, we want to make sure that that we are taking into consideration the encounters with enforcement and the community, that it remains at, no, not remains, but it is constantly changing, including the, I believe, item two that was previous about these encounters. So we want to bring awareness and make sure when these things are being thought about, these laws, that we are taking into consideration that it trinkles down all the way to an individual and a community. We've seen the extremism of what could happen as an Eric Gardner situation, and we just play with the council to take the community and individual, how it affects them. Thank you.
Desiree Valencia?
Dear members of the subcommittee, my name is Desiree Valencia, and I'm with the Latino Educational Fund. In two thousand and four, I also helped co-found the Latino Diabetes Association in honor of a family member who passed away due to diabetes. I'm sure that you're aware of the correlation between smoking and diabetes. According to the CDC, smokers are thirty to forty percent more likely to develop ties to diabetes than non-smokers. Unfortunately, through the course of my professional and personal life, I've learned firsthand about the dangers of smoking in a way that really hit home. Banning vaping and menthol cigarettes is a great attempt to address the serious health issues facing Phoenix communities, but it fails horribly in one part. It does not take into account the unintended consequences of banning menthol in communities of color where the usage of menthol is as high as eighty-five percent in Marien. Are we to believe that communities of color will from one day to the next stop using menthol cigarettes and switch to unflavored tobacco? I don't believe that's a reasonable expectation. I further believe that if this thought becomes policy, it will create an underground economy that will lead to more unnecessary interactions between law enforcement and communities of color. Is this something we want at a time when tensions are so high? What we need is educational programs implemented in school districts that will deter youth from this dangerous habit. Education as opposed to criminalization is the answer. Thank you for your consideration.
Gio Glazza? Sam Sterag?
Yes. Hello?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Samuel Nieto. I represent Southwest United Latino Veterans. I served on the USS Abraham Lincoln Station in Everett, Washington from October nineteen ninety-seven through October two thousand and one. I was a need-for-damage control deputy officer and firefighter. I'm calling today because I understood that there will be a discussion regarding a potential ban on flavored tobacco, which includes menthol cigarettes. I wanted to alert the committee members that the fact that many of my brothers and sisters that served in the military are also part of the recovery community, they have changed their lives for the better, and many of them have treated in drugs and alcohol for coffee and tobacco. As I'm sure you're aware, menthol cigarettes are the cigarette of choice in communities of color. Regardless of how we personally feel about coffee and tobacco, please don't create a burden for folks already, a delicate balancing act in life by turning otherwise legal activity into an illegal one. And even if smoking flavored tobacco itself would not be a crime, you created burdens for people in recovery by forcing them to go to neighboring cities like Avondale and Goodyear to purchase flavored tobacco. If deterring underage youth from smoking is a goal, why don't we invest in education to achieve that goal? It would be money much better spent. Thank you.
Chris Olson?
Chairman and subcommittee members, I work for a company that operates thirteen convenience stores in both Phoenix, Scottsdale, and other parts of the metro area. We believe that underage tobacco usage or alcohol usage is strictly prohibited. It is against the law. We actually police ourselves using undercover programs to make sure that our employees are not selling any of those products, including tobacco or vaping products, to underage buyers. We believe, you know, one of the biggest deterrents to this would be the police or parental oversight. Too many times, people want other people to manage their children. It's really up to the parents to control what their children are doing and make sure they're not doing illegal activities such as underage smoking. Banning flavored tobacco would have a serious negative impact, not only on our business, but on other businesses that rely on this. We do not believe that it is a fair and equitable solution to ban these products for all people when it's. when it's geared towards stopping underage tobacco usage. So I just want to let you know that we vehemently oppose this. Um, we do not think it's the right answer for a, uh, right solution to the underage vaping and tobacco usage problem. Thank you very much for your time.
Amanda Wheeler. Aaron Hamou.
Ty, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Hello, my name is Aaron Hamou. I come to you as a consumer first and most recently a business owner. Flavors save lives. I cannot stress this statement enough. I was a consumer of tobacco for many years, and my desire was to quit smoking. I tried everything I could get my hands on to quit smoking, everything from skin patches to chewing gum, but alas, nothing worked. I was introduced to vaping and immediately vaping piqued my curiosity. I walked into a local business, purchased a device and a flavored e-liquid, and that same day I quit smoking. I was mind-blown. I quickly realized I was feeling better, I could breathe again, and I could smell things and taste things that I had not been able to in a very long time. My self-discovery regarding vaping led it, led me to research these products. I discovered vaping products are a ninety-five percent healthier alternative to smoking cigarettes, as reported by the Royal College of Physicians. Not only would bills like this take these lifesaving products away from my consumers, but also take away from the hundreds of Arizona retailers that believe in this industry as much as I do. If you banned flavors, we would all be forced to shut down. Our customers would be forced to switch back to smoking cigarettes, which is a twenty times deadlier alternative. T twenty-one was passed on December twentieth of twenty nineteen, and it has been working. We have seen a thirty percent decrease of youth use according to the twenty-twenty National Youth Tobacco Survey. A flavor ban would also result in massively reducing sales tax revenue for the city. I think we all can agree this is the last thing that we need with Arizona being the hotspot of the world for COVID. I truly believe that what I do saves lives. I go to work every morning with a mission to save lives and turn away minors. And to that point, I have passed every single sting. However, as a business owner, to put it in perspective for you, I only carry one straight tobacco flavor and one straight menthol flavor. If this bill's passed, my business would be reduced to two bottles of e-liquid, and no business can survive off that. Ninety-eight percent of my customers use flavored e-liquids to quit smoking. The ages of my customers range from twenty-one to eighty-five, with the majority of them being in their forties. I come to you on behalf of my customers and as a business owner. Flavors save lives. Thank you.
Mark Miller. Mark Miller. Furman Oliva.
Members of the subcommittee, thank you for this opportunity. My name is Furman Oliva, and I'm a member of I Love Homeless Phoenix, a five oh one C three organization. Our founder, Gio Gaya Rza, is a veteran who served in the United States Marine Corps from nineteen ninety-three to nineteen ninety-nine. Our organization consists of veterans, community organizers, students, parents, brothers, sisters, sons, and daughters. It is estimated by the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development that there are close to one thousand homeless veterans living in the state, with many of those veterans living here in Phoenix. A lot of these veterans smoke, and many of them choose to smoke flavored tobacco. It is commonly understood that smoking is a coping mechanism. I don't personally smoke, and I don't encourage smoking, but I feel strongly that the most vulnerable of our society who choose to smoke should be able to do so without fear of legal consequence or repercussion. I would hate to see an underground economy develop out of policy that prohibits the sale of flavored tobacco, only to create a pipeline to incarceration and other legal issues. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Simon Isaac. Gibson McKay.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good. Mr. Chairman and members, I'm Gibson McKay, native son of Arizona, raising my sixth generation of three teenage boys who attend Sunny Slope High School. I represent the American Vapor Manufacturers who make up fourteen thousand small businesses in this country and the Arizona Sm- Smoke Free Business Alliance. Few have as invested interest in this issue than me, not only for my sons, who I prohibit from using these products, but for an industry dedicated to regulating itself and whose goal is to help adults quit smoking. Let me say this. If you want to regulate this industry, you ought to know that there's a bill at the legislature right now regulates licenses and enforces vaping in the state of Arizona. It also includes vaping, restricting vaping and tobacco use to the age of twenty-one in compliance with federal law. We're working to pass this bill. It's a bill we have discussed with the AG's office, the League of Cities and Towns, as well as the State Liquor Department. It does not intrude on your ability to zone appropriately. Almost as important is the science. A study, if the UK arguably the most important single study to date due to its large sample size, says that electric ni- nicotine group quit smoking at double the rate than a non-vapor group, a hundred percent more than the non-vap- vaping group. E-cigarettes were more effective for smoking cessation than nicotine replacement therapy. What's most important about this study is it's not from our industry, but from the American Cancer Society. Let me finish by saying this. American Heart Association put out a, a press release eight days ago, and it said, um, smoking has a well-known link to cardiovascular disease. However, their study looked at seven thousand adults and compared to participants who smoked exclusively, those who vape exclusively have signi- significant lower levels. Thank you for your time.
Katie Bertell.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. Good morning. Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Katie Lattell. I'm the mother of four and a vaping business owner. Until we start talking about banning actual cigarettes, this whole vaping flavor ban idea should be removed. Eliminating e-liquid flavors will close down an industry that was created with the intention of helping smokers quit cigarettes. My husband and I started an e-liquid company in twenty fourteen. We only manufacture one tobacco flavor out of thirty. It is one of our worst sellers. Most ex-smokers don't want to be reminded of the tobacco taste of deadly cigarettes. My husband and I also own three vape shops in the Phoenix area with one store being in the city of Phoenix. About eighty percent of our store's total sales are flavored for e-liquids. Our stores have passed every age verification since we've been in business. The Attorney General currently only checks for age eighteen and over. We are, however, following the federal tobacco rate to twenty-one since it went into effect. I think passing T twenty-one in Arizona would help fix this issue. If the flavor ban passes, we will be forced to close our Phoenix store. We already had to close down one of our four stores due to the pandemic. Luckily, we were able to keep the other three open for now. The main reason why so many groups are against vaping is that vaping is actually making millions of money. In November nineteen ninety-eight, Arizona and most other states entered the Masser Settlement Agreement. The MSA requires the five biggest tobacco manufacturers to pay staking for security. The agreement was for states to collect the money in exchange for those states not suing tobacco companies to recoup money spent on tobacco illnesses. Since nineteen ninety-eight, Arizona has received more than a billion dollars in MSA payments. In twenty nineteen alone, Arizona received four hundred twenty-nine million and only spent seventeen point three million of that on tobacco control, which is just four percent. That is a small fraction of what the CDC recommends spending. The most important reason for not doing an e-liquid flavor ban is simple. The Royal College of Physicians, a group of over thirty-five thousand doctors found in twenty sixteen that they think is at least ninety-five percent less harmful than smoking cigarettes. Thank you for your time.
Chris Yolos. George Abraham. Kyle Adolf.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. Hello, committee members. My name is Kyle Adolf. I am a lifelong resident of Arizona. I've been a small business owner right here in the Phoenix, Arizona, area for the better part of six years. I come to you as a member of the Arizona Smoke Free Business Alliance, and I'd like to share some information about T twenty-one and its effectiveness and why flavor bans and prohibitions just do not work. Last year, the federal government raised the minimum age to purchase tobacco from eighteen to twenty-one. This effort was set forth in an attempt to curb, help curb, youth access to these products. The reality, it's working. According to a recent report by Health Day, areas in which enacted T twenty-one cite thirty-nine percent decline in smoking between eighteen to twenty-year-olds. Why does this work so well? I like to call it "social availability." Teens are now further away from the social situations where access was much easier. Enacting T twenty-one here in Arizona with proper enforcement is what's needed. We currently only enforce eighteen and under. If we want to see a decline, we must enact and enforce. Flavor bans and why they don't work. We have seen other cities, counties, and municipalities enact flavor bans. At the end of the day, the city, the adult vapors, and the small business owners in the affected area pay the ultimate price. These consumers do not stop using flavored vapor products. They simply head across city lines or order it from their home. The worry is also the lack of regulation for the black market that will arise. Currently, all flavored vapor products on the market must adhere to stringent FDA requirements and regulations and guidelines. With a black market, none of that exists. Even more so, it pushes current adult vapors back to a deadly alternative combustible tobacco product. Since the enactment of T twenty-
Brian Hummel.
Good morning. My name's Brian Hummel. I'm the Arizona Director of Government Relations for the American Cancer Society Cancer Action Network. We do the advocacy work for the American Cancer Society. Arizona is one of only a few states that does not have a tobacco retail license. While on this call and other tobacco industry, uh, while on this call and other calls in the community listening sessions, the tobacco industry's cherry-picked data and studies. You need to know, the FDA, the CDC, and anyone who knows anything about health, uh, says that the leading cause of preventable death in the United States is tobacco use. In regard to flavors, you need to know that the tobacco industry has long used flavors to attract new customers, especially young people and people of color. Although the federal government has made noise about regulating flavored tobacco products, they're not doing a very good job. We feel restricting flavors is an area for all elected officials who have it in their power to act should. Don't wait for someone else to act. History would indicate you and we will wait and wait and wait while another generation of kids will be addicted to nicotine. Meanwhile, the tobacco industry has consistently asked for states to preempt cities from regulating tobacco. That has occurred here in Arizona the past three years. We would hope that cities would join with us and fight for the ability to respond to a public health crisis as conditions on the ground merit, because there are active efforts going on right now that would prevent you, as the city of Phoenix, from dealing with this issue in the very near future. The tobacco industry is telling you they only want to be regulated under their terms, but we've done it their way for too long. It's time to do this from a public health perspective. As a fifteen-year Phoenix resident, I pray that part of the city's economic development strategy is not centered around tobacco. Allowing flavors, any flavor, in any tobacco product is an escape hatch and a carve-out for the tobacco industry. After more than a year of this process, I resp-
John McEligot. Philip Carpenter.
Good morning, members of the Public Safety and Justice Subcommittee of the Phoenix City Council. My name is Philip Carpenter, and I am the Executive Director of Arizona's Concerned About Smoking. It's long overdue to start reversing the worsening youth e-cigarette epidemic and stop tobacco companies from using appealing flavors to lure kids into a lifetime of addiction. According to Campaign for Tobacco-Free Kids, there are one hundred and fifteen thousand kids now under eighteen and alive in Arizona who will ultimately die prematurely from smoking. This is very similar to what big tobacco has done in years past. It comes at a critical time with growing concerns among health experts that smoking and vaping can worsen the effects of COVID nineteen. Ending the sale of flavored tobacco products is a necessary step to reverse skyrocketing youth use of e-cigarettes and tobacco products and help prevent nicotine from addicting a new generation. It's never beneficial for a young, developing brain to become addicted to anything. A recent study also concluded that e-cigarette use might be related to sleep deprivation in young adults. Candy-flavored products hook kids on nicotine. Tobacco companies know this. Using flavors like cotton candy, bubble gum, and gummy bears, they have created an epidemic of e-cigarette use among our youth, just shy of one in five high school students here in Arizona now use vape products. The twenty twenty Na- National Youth Tobacco Survey found that eighty-three percent of youth e-cigarette users use flavored products and that kids have shifted dramatically to menthol and disposable e-cigarettes left on the market by the FDA's, FDA's current policy. According to Monica Caffey, Chair of the Behavioral Health Commission of San Bernardino County, in a recent My Turn guest commentary, in addition to harming teens' developing lungs, these tobacco companies contain enormous amounts of nicotine that completely rewire adolescents' developing brains, creating irreversible cognitive changes potentially leading to years of further addiction. Please know that ACAST's drawing-
Brianna Weeks.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the subcommittee. My name is Brianna Weeks, Health Policy Specialist at Children's Action Alliance and resident of Phoenix. Thank you for the opportunity to speak again on this important issue. I will take this time to reiterate CAA's position and ask the city of Phoenix to move forward without further delay in creating an ordinance that addresses the sale of flavored tobacco products in the city of Phoenix. As an organization concerned with the health and well-being of children in Arizona, CAA supports a comprehensive ban on the sale of all flavored tobacco products, cigarettes, e-cigarettes, cigars, mini cigars, and the endless list of products that contain flavors, including mint, menthol, cotton candy, bubble gum, fruits, and over fifteen thousand other flavors that we know are specifically designed to hook kids. Tobacco companies are formidable public health opponents prioritizing profit over the health and safety of everyday people with a demonstrated history of targeting kids in lower socioeconomic neighborhoods and communities of color through concentration of neighborhood retail shops. Phoenix is no exception. One forty-one percent of Phoenix schools have a tobacco retailer within one thousand feet of the stores. Opportunities for health and well-being are not equally distributed across Phoenix, and preventative measures are more important than ever, keeping youth, particularly youth of color and those from lower socioeconomic neighborhoods, healthy during the COVID nineteen pandemic and beyond. Again, the health impacts of smoking traditional cigarettes are well documented, and research continually shows the connection between e-cigarettes and the switch to smoking traditional cigarettes, as well as the dangers of nicotine consumption for adolescents. While you have heard talk of tax revenue loss, a flavored tobacco ban could result in tremendous healthcare savings, as smoking-related illness costs Arizona two point three billion dollars each year. CAA joins Phoenix voters and some fifty respected public health, education, youth services, and community advocacy organizations in calling for an end to the sale of flavored tobacco products. Thank you.
Stephanie Seet.
Good morning. Um, Stephanie Seete, Public Information Officer for Community Bridges, um, partnered with Parents Against Vaping, E-Sigs, and Tobacco-Free Kids. And overall, I've built a twenty-year career educating people about substance abuse, specifically tobacco. And I think that's where it starts, and I have tons of things that I want to say, but my heart tells me that this is just clearly a problem. If I could build a twenty-year career educating people and kids and trying to save lives, I mean, yeah, we have to reiterate that this is the number one cause of preventable death, and I think it's really just common sense. A year ago, we were scared about people on ventilators because of vaping, and now it's COVID. We just need to be able to breathe. And I think the ultimate goal, it is lives, not money, not about people making money. Majority of these kids are starting with E-Sigs because they're flavored. That's why they like them and try them. And I'll tell you, as I've been sitting here since nine AM, I've gotten a few texts from kids because I work with them. And I'll just kind of paraphrase that I have a sixteen-year-old kid from Southwest Leadership Academy in Phoenix saying she knows it hurts your lungs, you're born healthy, but then as a teenager, you have the chances to damage them. She said, you know, quote, "Good kids feel pressure to use and fit in, and this all starts around sixth and seventh grade. Tobacco gets you addicted really fast, and it starts to change the way you are-" Tobacco gets you addicted really fast, and it starts to change the way you are thinking and acting. You are addicted, once you are addicted, you start to only focus on smoking and vaping, and that is a lot of stu-, that's why a lot of students fail school or don't go." That's the quote from a 16-year-old kid. Another 17-year-old boy from the same school said his grandma has died, that a lot of his friends use this stuff, flavored tobacco, wax pens, and they think it helps them with stress, but it really causes them. And he's disappointed that it targets kids, that kids are the target of the flavors. They know this. Again, I think we need to do anything we can to remove temptation. So I think we really are just asking for your support and to direct city staff and city attorney to continue our conversations. Thank you for always giving us the opportunity to share, and hopefully we can end the sale of flavored tobacco.
Cynthia Strumba?
Okay, I believe I have you all now. Correct?
Yes.
Okay. Hi, my name is Cynthia Strumba. I'm speaking to you on behalf of Parents Against Vaping E-cigarettes, or PAVE. We're a national volunteer grassroots organization. We've been working very hard to counter the targeting of our children by big tobacco, both nationally and here in Phoenix. We sincerely hope that City Council will choose the health of Phoenix's children by eliminating the sales of all flavored vaping products, along with menthol and all flavored tobacco products, which are all used to target Black and Hispanic communities, LGBT communities, and teens in general. Kids who had never touched cigarettes because of the health risk fully embrace big tobacco's false vape messaging of harmless water vapor and unknowingly are becoming new, a new generation of nicotine addicts. The current 3.6 million youth vaping is at a level that the FDA, Surgeon General, and the Health Secretary all declared as epidemic. This year, teens are using flavored products with more frequency than ever before, and that's a sign of greater nicotine addiction. And the use of menthol flavor is rampant. 85% of all African-American smokers, 50% of all Hispanic smokers smoke menthol cigarettes, and now over 40% of e-cigarette users use menthol, and that's very important. Some say that vaping is safe. Parents know that's not true. Additionally, just this week, a new study published in the Journal of Pediatrics noted vaping may not be a way for kids to avoid the smoking habit after all. The study finds that teens who start vaping are three times more likely to smoke cigarettes in adulthood than those who never started with electronic cigarettes. The evidence indicates that these young people only start with these cigarettes, and then most of them convert to become cigarettes.
Cindy Bittcod?
Hi, thank you for hearing me today. I am the former president of Scottsdale Parent Council, and as you know, SUSD has schools in Phoenix, but this affects all children. My son started vaping in middle school because he really liked the way it tasted. He's now 21 years old, and we have tried every quitting technique that's out there. He is six months vape-free, but it has taken us this long to get here. He had no idea what he was playing with. He was far too young, and now he will battle that addiction for the rest of his life. Anything we can do to not entice our children to these products and this drug is much needed. Thank you for your time.
Paul Ullard?
Good morning, council members. Chairman Nowakowski is a member and council members, members of the committee. My name is Paul Ullard. I've lived in Phoenix for more than 30 years. I'm a small business owner and a parent of four. I hope the City of Phoenix will do everything they can to make our community safer by banning the sale of flavored tobacco products. When I asked my kids about vaping, I was shocked at their stories. The products are easily accessible, marketed to them with names that sound cool and hip, and thought to be safer than cigarettes. Vaping was all over their high school, and they knew too many people that were doing it or that had tried it. Unfortunately, unfortunately, the marketing efforts couldn't be farther from the truth. Vaping has become a public health crisis. It is dangerous, addictive, and a drain on our healthcare system at a time when we can least afford it. Phoenix was a cutting-edge city, working outside the box, and has won numerous national awards to show for those efforts. Eliminating a dangerous product is a bold and strong idea. I encourage the City Council to start this process to remove a dangerous and addictive product from the community to help our youth, employers, and environment. Thank you. Appreciate your-
Donna Bartlett?
Good afternoon. I'm Donna Bartlett, a concerned mother and parent volunteer for PAVE, working here in Phoenix, as well as nationwide, to support the ending of all flavored vaping products and flavored tobacco, including menthol. Less than a year ago, my son, an honor roll student and dual-sport varsity athlete, tried vaping for the first time. He said it tasted great. Cherry was one of his favorites. He liked the flavor because he could easily pass it off as if he were eating candy. The candy odor was a sign, like so many other things that I was seeing, flash drives that were actually vape devices, stripped USB cords that were being used to hotwire. There were so many signs, and even I, as a self-proclaimed helicopter mom and someone who stays informed, did not see what was happening to my son. It wasn't until months later, at which point my son had now been vaping for three months, five times a day. I could not believe it. My son Jacob got caught up in this vaping epidemic after he told me he would not do this because he did not want to damage his lungs. How did this happen when he knew the dangers? How did this happen when there was an age limit in place? But it did, and now he can't stop, and he craves it every day. His mood swings, his panic attacks, his failing grades. There are events that Jacob nor I will never soon forget, him being locked in the bathroom stall because he could not leave in fear that he would vape with the other kids. There were times that he would call me, not knowing what to do. This hungry, this healthy, strong, young, high-school boy with a 413 GPA, amazing athletic abilities, was no longer the son that I knew. Vaping was now ruling his life mentally and physically. The addiction had taken over. Sadly, the physical effects of vaping were just as great. My son, who was a starter player and could play the entire game for soccer and lacrosse, no longer could stand on the field the entire game because he could not breathe. He couldn't even breathe in gym class or a community basketball game. I just plead that these flavors go away. You must ban these-
Patty Beckham?
Hi there. Good afternoon. My name is Patty Beckman. I am speaking to you today with my personal opinion as a governing board member for the Scottsdale Unified School District, and most importantly, as a mother of two teenage daughters. I will remind the committee that SUSD has schools located in Phoenix. I have a unique view with regard to what is going on in our schools, and in November of 2020, I asked SUSD leadership to present information about vaping on our campuses. Part of the data that they discovered was that in the spring of 2020, before our district went virtual, we had over 187 discipline referrals for vaping. At the time of the meeting, again, just this last November, when our students had only returned to campus for a few short weeks, our leadership stunned the participants of our board meeting when they announced that just the one week prior, administration had confiscated five vapes from one of our elementary schools. Please let that sink in. In just one week, we took five vapes from children no older than 10 years old. I have listened to many on these calls, mostly business owners that sell vaping products say, "But we do not sell to minors. We are good. We follow every rule." Well, these kids are getting this somewhere. You may not be selling to minors, but you're selling to the older brothers and sisters, and because these young children are getting them, they are becoming addicted, and it's because of the flavors. The bottom line is, this is an epidemic. Our youth are at risk. There is absolutely no reason to sell flavored e-cigarettes and cigarettes, none. At the school district level, we are doing our part. We are educating our children about the risks and trying to help them stop after they've become addicted. We are doing all that we can, but it is your turn now. We need your help, too. I have been a governing board member for years now, and I have made many controversial decisions. I learned a long time ago not to just listen to a vocal majority that organizes and shows up for public comment. I learned to ask to hear from all stakeholders. As the majority of our school district leadership is working right now to educate kids, I encourage you to reach out to every district in your city boundary and get the real statistics and their thoughts. Do not be swayed by these that have the privilege of and luxury of speaking.
Nicole Olmstead?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Chair, members of the committee, I'm Nicole Olmstead, the Government Relations Director for the American Heart Association covering Arizona. I live and work in the greater Phoenix metro area. We would like to thank you for considering this bold move to protect the health of our residents. Over a year ago, you directed staff to research all options to address the teen tobacco use epidemic. As you know, and has been said many times, more than eight out of 10 young people have ever used tobacco products started with flavors. Over the course of the past several months, the coalition has been supporting this issue. Health groups, schools, local nonprofits, local community organizations, and many more have attended meetings, provided information, and provided feedback through the community listening sessions. Our groups have been there every step of the way and have done everything, and has been asked us to provide information and input. You have heard here today that there's a state bill that will address this issue. I would like to clarify that it has not been introduced yet. Additionally, what wasn't said by the big tobacco lobbyists is that the tobacco industry's bill creates confusion about what a tobacco product is, creates a convoluted system of enforcement so that the retailers that do sell to those under 21 will never be held accountable, and puts the majority of penalties squarely on the heads of those under the age of 21. They said that their bill will allow you to zone. What they didn't say was that they will take away your ability to address any tobacco issue in the future. What they didn't say was that you couldn't restrict marketing on the products near schools. What they didn't say was that they will preempt the city of Phoenix and all of the other cities in Arizona from being able to address any tobacco issue again in the future. Conversely, there will be a bill that is supported by the education community, the healthcare community, the nonprofit community, the hospital community, the insurance community, and several of the local cities and towns. A broad coalition that has the primary focus of improving the health of our communities. The city of Phoenix has the opportunity to take an innovative approach, one that works to address tobacco use rates. Thank you.
Emily Gregos?
Good morning. Youth vaping and smoking is a huge problem and public health issue that must be addressed. I had no idea how popular they are in college, high school, and even in middle school. This is horrifying. The tobacco industry is using these products to target kids and young adults like me to make smoking more appealing, cooler, or seem like less of a big deal. I know, and I fell into this trap. If I could have stopped myself then, I would have, and now I'm trying to prevent so many others from feeling the same way. The city needs to pass an ordinance banning the sale of flavored vaping products to make it more difficult for people under 21 to access them. Flavors glamorize this public health hazard and disguises the damaging effects it has on the body, especially in young people. Implementing this will make e-cigs and vaping products much less appealing to young people. Did you know that 40% of Phoenix public schools are within 1,000 feet of a tobacco retailer? Phoenix has over 1,000 tobacco retailers, which is 15 times more retailers than McDonald's, eight times more than Starbucks. That's really scary. Flavors improve the taste and mask the harshness of tobacco products, making it easier for kids to try the products and ultimately become addicted. Studies have found that young people who use e-cigs are more likely to become smokers, and many of those are low-risk youth who would not have otherwise smoked cigarettes and are now exposed to those carcinogenic chemicals. Young people who use e-cigs were four times more likely to try cigarettes later. More importantly, with the health crisis of coronavirus, we don't need products that damage lungs and put individuals at greater risk. Nicotine impacts the cardiovascular system and is still prevalent in e-cigs. This issue is deep-rooted, and there is a solution to help. Now is the time for the city of Phoenix to take a stand, be strong, and send a message that dangerous addictive products are bad regardless of how they're packaged. Strong local action is needed to help our communities and youth. We need to do something and pass this ordinance to ban this.
Mark Barnes?
And Subcommittee- Mr. Chairman, Subcommittee Members, my name is Mark Barnes with the Preventing Tobacco Addiction Foundation, and I'm here in support of the city establishing additional controls on the sale of tobacco and related products. The Preventing Tobacco Addiction Foundation was founded in 1996 by an Arizona physician and since then has worked with local governments around the nation to put in place regulations that effectively reduce youth access to these products by individuals under the age of 21. In December 2019, we appeared before this same Subcommittee to urge the city to consider developing a comprehensive ordinance that would effectively reduce access to tobacco-related products. We would encourage the city to develop an ordinance that includes the following elements: establish a retail tobacco license, essentially require retailers that sell tobacco-related products to be licensed by the city, prohibit retailers from selling tobacco products to individuals under the age of 21, and to ban the sale of flavored tobacco products. These elements of an ordinance fit together well and have been used by other jurisdictions to combat the youth vaping epidemic and the resurgence of tobacco use by high-school-age kids. We have submitted a letter in support of the city developing an ordinance with the elements I've described here. Once again, we would hope that the Subcommittee provides direction to the city attorney's office and others to begin developing options for the council to consider for inclusion in a comprehensive tobacco ordinance that includes licensure for tobacco retailers, prohibits retailers from selling to individuals under 21, and a flavor ban. Thank you for your time. I'd be happy to comment further.
Claudia Rodas?
Hi, good morning, Chairman Nowakowski and members of the committee. Thank you for the opportunity to say a few words today. I'm here on behalf of the Campaign for Tobacco-Free Kids. We're one of the leading advocacy organizations working to reduce tobacco use and its deadly consequences across the nation and globally. I want to clarify, what is it that we're asking for you all to do today? We're asking the Phoenix City Council to protect the health and the future of Phoenix's youth and communities of color. To do that, they must end, you must end the sale of all flavored tobacco products. So what does that mean? It would mean that all tobacco products that exist on the market in your city today, so any product, tobacco product, that imparts any distinct non-tobacco taste or aroma, could not and would not be sold within your border. That's it. That's all we're asking for. We're not asking for any type of age restriction. We're not asking for any type of exemption for any particular outlet. Why? Because any tobacco product that's left on the market will allow for that ease of youth, young adults, and adults to use those products still within your city. The tobacco industry has a long-time history of particularly targeting youth, those that live in lower socioeconomic communities, communities of color, LGBTQ, and mental health and other vulnerable communities. I want to clarify something that has been said today by those who testified earlier. We are not asking for law enforcement authority to have a role in enforcing this ordinance. We're not asking for any type of criminalization. We strongly believe that other state and city administrative agencies have the capacity to ensure that retailers will be complying. I wanted to clarify also, there was something that said today about a 97% compliance rate of some sort. I wanted to make sure that you all know as city officials that compliance and inspection rates stopped because of COVID last year. So you must look at other-
Diane Moore?
Hello? Hello? Oh, hi. I am a parent, and I am going to read my son's testimony. Because he's in school, he waited for a while, and I sent him back to school. Hello, my name is Quentin, and I am 12 years old. I am here to change something in the world that is breaking kids' relationships with their families. My brother was addicted to nicotine in 2018. My brother was really nice, kind, and smart before the nicotine started taking over his brain. Once I knew my brother was addicted, I started getting scared, like really scared, and I mean it. He was yelling and banging on the walls. Thankfully, my parents were able to figure out how to test and take away his ability to get nicotine. It's been a year now, and he's doing fine. It's been two years now. We have learned a lot about the dangers of nicotine, and I want to encourage you to take away access- a lot about dangers of nicotine, and I want to encourage you to take away access to flavors, all flavors of nicotine. Nicotine tastes gross because it is gross and it destroys brains. There's no flavor that should sugarcoat it. Thank you for your time. And I just want to add to his testimony. It pretty much explains the effects of nicotine on a developing brain. The tobacco industry, they're targeting our kids with cotton candy flavors. That's undisputable. I mean, no one, adults should not be attracted to that. And for every one person who transitions off of traditional smoking to vaping, and that they claim that this is a solution, 80 kids start vaping because they have sugar on the nicotine. 80 kids.
Jordan Rose.
Yes, thank you. This is Jordan Rose Law Group, and I represent Tobacco-Free Kids. And thank you for taking all of this testimony. I think the councilwoman brought up some great points at the outset. The outreach just really does need to continue. We need to continue outreach to the West Side, to the Village Committees, which didn't participate in this important conversation at all. And we just need to discuss more with your attorneys and staff. Evidence of the need to further discuss and define the issue, so much of the testimony today is just not at all what's being requested, and the confusion surrounding these things are troubling and need to be clarified. I want to be sure that everyone knows there is no request to involve police enforcement, not at all, zero. And what we all do just know based on logic is that the purpose of flavoring a tobacco product as cotton candy is not at all aimed at adults. And while I know that COVID makes notice for community discussions challenging, the notice to us for these community meetings and to others in the community was only a day prior to the meetings occurring. It appears from the testimony and the various recommended solutions, and the fact that you literally have heard this topic of importance from thousands of residents in the community meetings, and some petitions, and the various emails and calls to your offices, that this discussion needs to be sent back to staff to continue the discussion. Just as you had a successful result with that continual conversation with city staff and the various parties of interest in the recent enactment of sober living home standards, I would ask that you allow for continued conversation with the city staff and attorney on flavored tobacco, and that you direct your staff and your attorney to continue those discussions prior to bringing this back to the subcommittee at a later date. The process and continual discussion over an extended period of time provided consensus on that sober living home issue, which was complicated. This is a matter of health and of our kids. Directing your city and staff to further discuss won't harm anyone. You thankfully and...
Karen Kleinsmet.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Perfect. I'm the Vice President of Health for the American Heart Association in Greater Phoenix, and I did attend one of the community feedback sessions. Thank you for letting me speak today. Flavored tobacco products are designed to appeal to children. These products are filled with nicotine, a substance that the U.S. Surgeon General says is as addictive as cocaine or heroin, and once hooked, kids become customers for big tobacco for life, however shortened that might be as a result. Today in the USA, 50% of teens report having tried vape products, and one in five teens report that they are currently smoking and vaping. This is a level so high, we haven't seen it since 1997. Each year in Arizona, more than 8,300 adults die from smoking. That's 115,000 kids under the age of 18 right now who will die prematurely from smoking. It's big. It's filling State Farm Stadium two times with kids and them dying early. During the pandemic, Arizonans are turning to tobacco products in record numbers. We know because the tax revenues are increasing, and they're having flavored products being the most popular. We can't continue to wait. We must act. Each day we wait, we are condemning more children to a lifelong addiction and premature death. I ask you, our leaders, to move forward. I ask you to support and direct the city staff and city attorney to continue conversations on addressing the issue to end the sale of flavored tobacco products in Phoenix. Thank you.
Sydney Smith. Kenneth Ray.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. My name is Kenneth Ray. I'm the Senior Program Manager for the Center for Black Health and Equity, which is a national organization that is providing resources to communities that are wishing to protect themselves from the dangers of tobacco use. Approximately 62 municipalities around the country have adopted comprehensive menthol-flavored restriction laws, and they have not been met with any negative public outcry by communities. They have been challenged by the tobacco industry, and so as those challenges have occurred, municipalities are being asked by the tobacco industry to make decisions on behalf of profit over the public's health. In that, in addition to that, the tobacco industry wants to deny that 445,000 deaths are due that occur in the African-American community by the targeting of menthol-flavored tobacco products. And as you heard previously, 480,000 deaths in all races and ethnic groups have occurred on an annual basis as a result of tobacco use. So we at the center, we're encouraging you to consider the adoption of a ban on all flavors, including menthol, on all tobacco products at all times, because some of these laws that are passed around the country tend to separate times for youth versus adults, appearing that vaping and tobacco use is an adult behavior, and we want you to include all venues so that it's not just youth-centered environments that are spared the appearance of tobacco use, but in all adult venues as well. Thank you for this opportunity.
Carlissa Wright. Joanna Struther.
Yes, good morning, chairman and members of the subcommittee. My name is Joanna Struther, and I am the Senior Director of Advocacy for the American Lung Association. The health community is looking at the city of Phoenix to be a leader when considering this ordinance. We have been able to provide overwhelming support at each city meeting and including all of the community listening sessions that we support this ordinance. I ask you to allow for continued conversations with the city staff and attorney on flavored tobacco products, and would ask you to direct staff and the attorney to continue those discussions prior to bringing this back to the subcommittee at a later date. The American Lung Association supports restricting the sale of all flavored tobacco products, including a licensing system that would allow the city to enforce the ordinance. You have all heard the health reasons why it's important more than ever, especially now with the COVID-19 pandemic. Don't get distracted by the industry's talking points that they have used for years to keep kids and adults addicted. Being a Latina myself, I want to remind you that the tobacco industry has long targeted communities of color, especially with menthol products. I want my community to be healthier. Flavors do not save lives, only keep people addicted. Remember, this ordinance is for a healthier community. I want to point out a few things. We agree, the police department should not be the agency to enforce this ordinance. Also, retailers are not sufficiently having compliance checks. Checks happen far and few between, and right now with COVID-19 pandemic, they are not happening at all. Also, the bill at the legislature, it's an industry's bill. It will preempt the city from ever being able to address tobacco issues and to decide what's best for our community. Again, the city of Phoenix has an incredible opportunity to be a leader, and I ask you to allow for continued conversation with the city staff and attorney on flavored tobacco products, and would ask you to direct the city staff and attorney to continue those discussions.
Petra Morrison.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Hi, so this is Bethra Morrison. I was able to attend a lot of the community calls. I was able, community listening sessions, speak at two of them, share my written comments online. Colleagues of mine who are also in the health field were able to email you and share their experiences on the front lines of the compounded vaping and COVID-19 pandemic. This is a matter of health and your ability to do your job, address public health and safety. The tobacco industry of the 70s and 80s and the vaping industry of today are two heads of the same beast. Both have been touted as healthy and now a healthier alternative, and both target low-income families and BIPOC communities. Eric Garner was not a victim of public health policy. He was a victim of the tobacco industry, which historically has and continues to target black men. The insidious addiction of these nicotine and tobacco products would have users defend these devices and mechanisms which make them more palatable on a city council call, and the name a small business with the industry pulling the strings. And we know that they're pulling the strings because we keep hearing that flavor eliminations are to be left up to the state and not to you or those who you're elected to protect their health. These tactics are older than a lot of folks on this call. The majority of listeners are most likely unaware that your ability to protect us and your community is going to be taken away with you in a matter of days, if not weeks, if not months. Thank you for your time, and I really hope that you consider this move to eliminate these flavors. Thank you.
Lloyd Galloway.
Good morning. As an African-American father and grandfather, I am in favor of banning menthol and all flavored tobacco products because I have seen its effect on family members and friends. So why is menthol such a prominent factor, fixture in the communities of color? It's because tobacco industry has targeted communities of color with menthol tobacco products. Now, this has affected the health and wealth of communities of color, and has also seen the adverse effects of COVID-19 in these communities because of the lung damage by using tobacco products. Now, some have said in testimony this morning that I get the feeling that they think that vaping is as healthy as eating an apple, and we know that vaping is dangerous. So I implore you, the council, to ban all menthol and flavored tobacco products. Thank you.
D.O. White. Antonio. Bell de Lamora.
Hi, I'm a 28-year resident of Phoenix, Arizona. All tobacco products, cigarettes, e-cigarettes, cigars, mini cigars, and the endless list of products that contain flavor menthol, cotton candy, bubble gum, fruits, and over 15,000 other flavors are all designed to hook kids. In addition to flavors, the tobacco industry targets kids in Phoenix. Throughout their marketing tactics, over 41% of Phoenix schools have tobacco retailers within 1,000 feet of their doors. The tobacco industry is especially aggressive in targeting kids in lower socioeconomic neighborhoods and communities of color through concentrating of neighborhood retail shops. Phoenicians support our efforts. Some 50 respected public health, education, youth services, and community advocacy organizations have called for the end of the sale of flavored tobacco products, and the public agrees. By overwhelming margins, polls show that Phoenix voters should support the flavor ordinance and licensing of retailers to enforce it. Sadly, the COVID-19 pandemic continues. Rollout of vaccines have been slow. Diagnoses of hospitalizations and deaths continue to rise. Lung health and damage by the flavored products has never been more critical. Thank you.
Lawrence Robinson.
Hello, thank you for allowing my testimony. It really is testimony on behalf of not just myself, but my entire community, particularly a community of color that is under attack, that is facing a health disparity that COVID is only really exacerbating. As the president of the Roosevelt School District Governing Board, I was able to vote yes on a resolution that would take one of the insidious substances that has no nutritional or social value out of my community. And what we want to do, if this passes the Phoenix City Council, is just simply draw a bright line in the sand, which states that if you are marketing a product toward children because you're putting it into flavors that children like, then it is not going to be sold in the city of Phoenix, period. I wonder if this were an instance of having a toxic ingredient in dog food, if people would be as quiet as they are now, or if our small business owners, who I understand are generally concerned, would be as concerned if it were their kids being hooked, who live within 1,000 feet, or their schools are within 1,000 feet of a tobacco seller, a dispensary. And so what I'm asking you to do today, along with all of the people that I represent, the kids who will hopefully one day not be addicted to tobacco, the families that one day will be ameliorated of this health epidemic, and the communities that will breathe cleaner air, is just simply vote for the families and the unnamed, those who don't have lobbyists before you today. Vote for their health and for our communities over folks who have a conceivable concern, but it's not a justified one, to do on the backs of our kids. Thank you very much.
Chairman, I have a question for Lawrence.
Yes, councilwoman, go ahead.
Lawrence, are you there?
I am. I am very much. Thank you.
Yeah, so my question is, what exactly did you guys pass, and how are you guys enforcing it? I guess I just didn't understand that.
Sure, that's a great question. So what we passed was just a resolution in support of ending tobacco dependence and use among youth, and for individuals such as yourself who do so much for our community to understand that this really is an issue that, you know, in just the households of the average Phoenician, working-class families on the South and West Side, that we really need some help here. So the resolution was just presenting the data as it is, that flavored tobaccos are hooking kids, and that we view it as a public health epidemic that our kids are, you know, susceptible to. 80% of kids who have used tobacco started with a flavored tobacco. And, you know, this is obviously something that has a much larger effect on African-American and Latino families than any other.
So there was nothing, because you said that you guys banned it something from the schools? I guess that's what I was curious about.
Yeah, I'm sorry. To directly answer that question, we passed a resolution, and so it wasn't a resolution that would necessarily have any teeth to it, other than that it is our support of this passage at the city of Phoenix. You know, we could talk all day about supporting it, but we really need you all to pass it.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Next person, Cory. Tim Reester. Carol Magruder.
Okay, Chairman, we have one last speaker for this item, but they donated some time from some other individuals, so they'll have a little bit more time, and that is Swati Rawini.
Can I meet? Hello?
Yes.
Okay, great. Hi, my name is Swati Rawini, and I am an attorney at the Campaign for Tobacco-Free Kids. Tobacco-Free Kids has previously filed legal briefs as a friend of the court in several cases in federal court that have raised the issue of whether the Federal Family Smoking Prevention and Tobacco Control Act preempts state and local laws restricting the sale of flavored tobacco products. I appreciate the opportunity to address concerns relating to federal preemption and the city council's authority to regulate the sale of flavored tobacco products. I'm also happy to continue these discussions with city staff attorneys at your direction. Local authority to ban the sale of flavored tobacco products is not preempted by the Tobacco Control Act. In fact, Congress carefully crafted the act to protect state and local authority to regulate tobacco. Section 916 of the act, titled Preservation of State and Local Authority, Section 916 of the act titled Preservation of State and Local Authority reserves regulation at the manufacturing stage exclusively to the federal government, but allows states and localities to continue to regulate sales. Section 916 starts with the Preservation Clause, which sweeps broadly and specifically clarifies that local authority to regulate or prohibit the sale of tobacco products is not limited by the Tobacco Control Act. The Preemption Clause follows, providing certain limited exceptions, all of which are of unique federal concern because they relate to manufacturing of tobacco products. Finally, the Savings Clause allows local requirements relating to the sale of tobacco products, even if they are otherwise covered under the Preemption Clause. This three-part structure makes clear that the Tobacco Control Act distinguishes between measures related to manufacturing, which are preempted, and measures relating to sales, which are not. To date, at least 300 localities across the United States have passed restrictions on the sale of flavored tobacco products. Two circuit courts and three federal district courts have all addressed federal preemption under Tobacco Control Act. And every single one of these courts have concluded that state-local restrictions on tobacco products are not federally preempted. Thus, the city council has clear authority under federal law to restrict the sale of flavored tobacco products and does not need to wait for either the federal or state action in order to ban such products. Um, it would be quite useful to continue these conversations with your staff attorneys. And we would ask that you direct the city or staff attorneys to continue these discussions with us prior to bringing this topic back to subcommittee at a later date. Thank you very much.
And Cory, was that the last speaker? Chairman, yes, that was the last speaker. And I remember when we were talking about the sober living homes and how we had meeting after meeting. And I think one of the things that we need to do is bring back the stakeholders, the attorneys, so our attorneys and the attorney that just spoke right now can come together. Community members, um, council member Betty brought in that on the West Side wasn't a part of this conversation. Maybe having a meeting to make sure that people from the West Side and other parts of the city that weren't involved with the conversation can be a part of it and basically come back for, um, come back next month if we're able to do all that and to the subcommittee to have a vote on it. I'm not sure with my colleagues, but, um, that's what I'm thinking. What do you, um, I'll go back to your council member, um, Betty.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. Yes, I mean, I, so I had a couple of questions for, um, for Julie. Yes, so. So my, my question is, right, I mean, we heard from the public and, um, and the public is saying that they did, that they don't want this to be enforced by police. So how else would we, would we enforce this?
Chairman Nowakowski and council member, we would have to have further discussions about enforcement. In conversations we've had so far with city staff, we do not currently have any other staff that is set up to do this type of enforcement, which my understanding is really an undercover type of assignment to send someone in and pose as, you know, an under 21 and see if they are asked for ID or whether a retailer sells to them or not. Our police department is probably the best equipped to do that. So if the city was going to look at other avenues, we would also have to explore how to accomplish that in other departments because we don't currently have any system that I'm aware of that is, is able to do that.
Right, because, because listening to what, to what the public is, is saying, right? Um, the, the, the people that spoke in favor of the ban, it, it seems like, like we should, like council members, um, Nowakowski said, like, we should expand and, and talk to more folks about this. I, I think that's a good idea, so thank you so much for that. But then I also think that we also need to have a plan on how we're gonna enforce it. Um, you know, if it's not gonna be our, our police department and how much, yeah, like I, I think also like being very clear on that. Um, because then we're also, then later, as it is, you know, we were just talking about like 911 dispatchers and we've been, you know, having like different, different type of conversations. So I just would also like to see a plan around enforcement and how we would actually enforce this without putting more pressure on, on the police department. Thank you.
Any other my, any other colleagues have comments or suggestions? With that, um, Assistant Manager, I think we should take this back and have the attorneys have that conversation, look at other ways for, um, the communities that are involved, like the West Side, that council member, um, Betty talked about, that we include them and that we basically also look at in enforcement, if it's good. And besides the police officers, if there's any other ways to enforce, um, enforce this without using, um, police officers. And if we can take another month and maybe, um, come back after the attorneys, after the community, after all the holders have met and really come up with the plan that we can really, um, pass on to the full council. Is that possible, Milton?
Mr. Chairman, yes, yes, it is.
I'm not sure if that's, um, what the rest of my colleagues would like to be, like to do, um.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, um, Councilmember Thelma.
I mean, I'll support what you just said, but I also would like to have our Government Relations Department down at the legislature supporting the bill, but the one that doesn't prohibit the city from taking further action.
Okay, we can add that on there, too.
Yeah, Chairman, I would, I would agree with the Vice Mayor that, um, I, I think we should also, maybe all the council members get a briefing from, from Frank to see what the bill says and how can we be supportive? And how is it that, you know, school board members and everyone could also be supportive of that to try to figure out how is it that we can all work, work together on this so, so that we can actually have something, um, that's gonna work, that's gonna work for everyone.
Thank you. So I just really want to thank all my colleagues and all the individuals that called and, and voiced their concerns that were pro or con. And that's what the process is all about, is really listening to all sides of the story and all the stakeholders. And thank you for taking the time. I know it was a little bit, um, long, but I think that's what makes this, um, process successful. With that, I'll continue to the future agenda items, and we'll have Milton.
Yes, Mr. Mr. Chairman. Uh, next month, we will be dealing with a barking dog process law. I believe this request, uh, came, uh, from Councilmember Stark. And then, uh, we are, we'll see where we're at with the additional, uh, things you asked for relative to, uh, dialogue on the vaping item. And then we'll see if there are any additional items that subcommittee members are requesting.
Is there any other items to be added on future agenda? In the, if y'all think of something, you can always contact me to make sure we put it on for the future agenda item. With that, this meeting's adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.